Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Milford School Board meeting for Monday, November 18th, 2019. I'll start with introductions. To my left is Board Member Holly Talapa. I'm Kevin Drew, the Board Vice Chair. Mike Hannan, Board Member. Jane Fortson, our Business Administrator. Dr. Jessica Heisinger, the Superintendent. Rick Wood, Board Members joining us by phone. Ron Carvell, the Board Chair, was unable to join us tonight. Are you still there, Rick, in yours?
Yes.
Let me turn you up a little bit.
Okay.
So, the first order of business, could you grab that door, Holly? Thank you. The first order of business tonight is a hearing to receive and expend unanticipated revenue. I believe we have a, we won a contest for a donation of some Dell personal computers through Intel and Best Buy. I don't know if either Jane or Dr. Heisinger would like to expand on that a little bit.
Mr. Drew, I'm going to have you open the public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I would like to open the public hearing to receive and expend unanticipated revenue.
The Best Buy store, I believe our local one in Manchester, was part of a nationwide competition in which they were enhancing their skills as far as the computers and equipment that they sell. And the local Best Buy store was one of the recipients of the prize, which was $10,000. And they had the option of donating to a local school. Heron Pond was the recipient of that. And so, as a result, we're getting $10,000 of Dell computers. It's about, I believe, 21 computers. And so, we need to accept that donation.
Okay, thank you. Board Member questions, first of all. So, it says in this email that all this documentation had to be in by September 15th. I take it that was all taken care of. This is just catching up to the...
Yes, what they're looking for now is for the Board to accept it so that they have the records for their end of it, to do the donation.
Okay, thank you. Any other Board Member questions, comments? Are there any public comments or questions on the, on this item? Seeing none, uh...
There's one.
I'm sorry.
Steve Martin, 5 Cresswood Lane. Just to confirm, is this a 19820B hearing?
Yes.
Which by accepting donation increases your operating budget?
Well, yeah, a little different. Basically, accepting the donation.
So, it's not a 19820B hearing?
No, it's a donation of items.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Will it impact the tech budget in any way?
Nope.
So, I notice for future laptop purchases, will we now need to purchase 20 less? Or however many, is it 20 that they're donating?
21 of them. No, we wouldn't be purchasing less, but we are the recipient. I believe Mr. Stadahar can kind of attest because they did reach out through the Heron Pond principal and did at one point reach out to our Technology Director to kind of gauge what would be of use to us.
So, can I just ask, at Heron Pond, these are laptops, I assume? Are the students using laptops currently at Heron Pond? Will they be integrated into one of the lab, one of the computer labs? Or how will they be used?
Jerry Seidhard, Technology Director. I don't know if it'll be integrated into a lab. I don't know, you know, they haven't even accepted yet. For the most part, students are using Chromebooks. Teachers are using laptops because they interface with the Smart Boards and some of the other technologies. So, my guess, my thought would be of, most of these will probably be going to teachers, but that will free up some money that we're using on laptops for students.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, do I have a motion to receive and expend the unanticipated revenue for the Dell laptops?
Make a motion to receive.
Motion by Holly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion from the Board? All in favor and what all, I'll ask you to say aye or nay. And also, following that, we'll get Mr. Wood's vote from the, from the phone so that we can record that properly, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's three ayes, myself as well. And Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Okay, that's four ayes. The motion passes four to zero. Okay, do I have a motion to close the hearing? Motion by Holly Talapa.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. So, I will now call the Milford School Board meeting to order for Monday, November 18th, 2019. At this point, the first order of business for the School Board meeting is to open public comment. In the, in the agenda which some of you have, I know that there weren't enough to go around. There are copies of the policies that sort of govern the public comment period for your review. What I would just say is that discussion items are limited to the items on the agenda. Individual speakers are permitted three minutes each, and that we'll have a period of 20 minutes for public comment. We really have to stick to that as we have a lot of things to get to tonight, so would just ask that, you know, to try and maintain the three minute per person as there may be some people behind you that would like to speak. So, with that, I'll open the public comment.
This is Narbracken. Rob Canty, 48 Webster Street. I have lived in Milford since 2013. I've got two daughters that currently attend Jox. Many, or some of you already know me, but I've been trying very hard to kind of distance my professional, my personal life. I'm a, I've been a school psychologist for nine years. I've been trained in evaluations, counseling, developing and implementing behavior plans and FBAs. I worked in the only level four school in Worcester Elementary School with major behavior issues. And I worked with those programs in trying to correct the issues that were going on in the room to make them less violent and more, I guess, learner-friendly. And I've been trying to keep my opinions down since the beginning of the year. I've had issues with various things that have been occurring. And the thing that I'm most concerned about is the length of time that these violent behaviors have been occurring at Jox. And actually, the nuisance behaviors that are happening in each of the individual classrooms as well that are kind of overshadowed because of the significant behaviors that are occurring. And the issue that I have is not just for the kids that are getting hurt, but I'm all, I know about inclusion, I know about FAP, I know all that stuff. But my question is, when do the other kids get consideration? From what I understand, I know that Walker is, Walker has a great reputation, and I know that they're working with the school. I don't feel like planning was done well enough for this move. And actually, supports were taken away from Jox, from my understanding, with no more quiet room. There's no, no paraprofessionals in some of the rooms to deal with the everyday behaviors that my daughter, every day since she started school this year, has told me about. Three kids in particular, the same kids, either it's all three, or it's one at a time. They're losing privileges because of the behaviors of these kids, and the teachers can't handle it on their own. And they're not getting as much support because of all the support that's going into this other program. And correct me if I'm wrong, but Walker is only working with a select group of the teachers, correct? Not all the teachers in the building?
That's incorrect.
Okay, okay. Because I was told by a teacher differently, so that's good. But still, the fact that the violent behaviors continue is very concerning to me. And obviously, there's a whole room full of people here that are concerned about it as well. And I guess I just want to know, when is the line drawn? How many kids have to get hurt? This is the first experience for kids in school. And a lot of these kids that don't have issues, school is traumatizing to them. School is dangerous. And we're setting our kids off on a bad learning trajectory if we're going to start them out this way. And I'm all for inclusion, don't get me wrong, but I don't think it's being done as well as it should be right now. And I don't think there's anywhere near as many supports in place in Jox right now that need to be. So, for teacher safety too. I know one teacher already got hurt. So, I guess, I mean, a kid got sent off in an ambulance, so I guess, when do we say, okay, maybe this isn't working? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Drew, if I, if I may just clarify a couple of things. The child that was sent off in the ambulance was not sent off in the ambulance due to an incident with another child. I just want to be clear about that. That's misinformation that's out there. The second thing that I want to be clear about too is that we actually have added supports at Jox this year. We have added a special education teacher to Jox. In total, the number of tutors at Jox, we're down one tutor. We added special education teacher to help with this program. We've added a social worker to the building this year. We added a mental health therapist to the building this year. We've actually increased the number of adults in the building.
So, that's actually more concerning than...
Why?
Well, because...
Okay, hang on.
Oh, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Canty, absolutely. So, I think that...
If you do have the supports, and it's still happening.
Right. And so, I think that's why we had Walker come in tonight, and that's why we put a presentation together to discuss all of the things that we are doing and the systems and structures that we're putting into place. So, I completely hear you and agree with you, and take it very, very seriously. And I'm as concerned as everybody in this room. And we've put together a presentation tonight to address some of your concerns and to tell you what the plan is moving forward. And I think in my letter last week that I sent home, I talked about a short-term, immediate plan with safety plans for those students, as well as the long-term plan to put the systems and structures in place at the school.
Well, these kids can be disciplined too. And that's, I think, one thing that doesn't, people don't seem to think is happening. You know, I don't know. I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. This is a long time for this to be happening, two and a half months. Nuisance behaviors are one thing, but violent behaviors? I don't, I've worked in a lot of schools, and I haven't seen that in actually any of the schools but Worcester. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Brenda Walker, Route 13. In my almost 10 years coming to School Board meetings, I've never had a Board Member phone in before. I thought that was kind of a little puzzling last week, and it's happening, last meeting, and it's happening again this, this meeting. It's a little bit strange. I just have a couple of questions on that packet that we got last week on the who's leaving. We had asked for, a number of people had asked for some sort of a presentation on the number of people leaving the district. And I'm just going to read you this sentence. I'm not sure I understand this, and maybe Jessica, you can clarify this a little bit more for me, but in, under the paragraph, who's leaving, it says, "The reorganizing of positions resulted in the elimination of 20 positions which were redistributed to other needed positions. For this reason, it is not surprising that the paraprofessional job classification series saw the highest turnover rate at 50.8 percent among all job classification series with 32 people leaving in the fiscal year 2019. How could the restructuring of 20 professional positions have an impact on paraprofessional job classification and the high rate of paras leaving the district?"
I think because when we said we were going to be eliminating 14, and I did explain this to you in June, so I'll re-explain it again. When we had stated last budget cycle that we were going to be eliminating para positions, paras began to look. They began to look for other positions. We said we were going to begin reducing them and shifting those para positions into professional positions because we wanted to put certified teachers in place. We wanted to bring certified social workers and put them in the schools and hire mental health counselors. And we felt like we needed those things because that's what our data was saying. So, we reduced 14. And in the reduction of those 14, other paras began to look. And right now, the economy's very good. And some paras left because they were able to find better-paying jobs. Some paras looked for other reasons. But there was definitely the sense that we were going to be cutting back on those positions and shifting and reallocating monies to professional positions, teaching positions, support staff positions.
Hold on a second. With that, I just, I want to interject again. We need to keep this to items that are on the agenda for tonight.
So, when, when are we supposed to have public comments regarding things that have been brought up at past...
There are other avenues to interact with the School Board. We all have email. But right now, because we have to get through a lot of material tonight, we need to keep this to items that are on the agenda.
So, there's no way any of the citizens of Milford, New Hampshire can discuss something that's happened at a previous School Board meeting?
I just explained to you how you could do that.
In a public meeting, in a, in a public setting?
Yes.
So, Dr. Heisinger, when we spoke, that was not what, how it was said. 20 professional staff were reallocated. That has nothing to do with paraprofessionals leaving the service. Also, on this report, there's some incorrect data. 2017-18 actually had 32 people, not 40. And so, 16-17 and 17-18 data is incorrect in this. They're just transposed in this, that's all. So, that, that data is incorrect. But I'm not sure how that has anything, one thing has. I understand what you're saying, and you have always said that 20, the 20 professional staff were reallocated into the district, but that had no impact on the paras. Also, in this report, it, as presented in the budget update of 6/24/19, that budget is, that, that data is incorrect also because there were more positions eliminated. So, this report, maybe we could have an updated one that has the, all the correct data on it in the future.
If you don't mind bringing that to HR?
Sure, I'll do that.
Because HR compiled the data.
Yeah, and we can, yeah, get that, maybe get a, the one with all the correct data in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, good evening. I'm Stephanie Cody, 26 Prospect Street. I'm going to read off of this because I'm too nervous. I'm just one of the concerned residents here tonight. I understand that within the past year, there was a large push for the integration system. Yet, the parents have never been made aware of the studies that are showing in detail the proven increased productivity of all students through the structural change, changeover that was essentially demonstrated in an improved learning environment for all children. Our current understanding is that the integration is to be a trauma-sensitive environment which has all students the same age in the same classroom regardless of their behavioral, social, or emotional behaviors or issues, and have previously been documented. As a whole, we have a lot of concerns about this integrative system. Not only have students and teachers and parents never been made fully aware of the longevity of these studies, as well as the productivity of these children as young adults, but what are we seeing so far does not seem to fit of what the Milford School system needs. Changing a system, sorry, to be integrated and trauma-sensitive does not mean that the children without behavioral, emotional issues should be made exposed to severe outbursts, disruptive classroom behavior, lockdown classrooms, while child with behavioral issues is attempted to be calmed down. This actually leads to four things. Children without behavior issues are stripped of a safe learning environment. Children without behavior issues are certainly taught that physical and verbal outbursts have little to no consequences at school. Children with behavioral issues who need extra attention and strict boundaries are not met with either. Staffing issues do not permit paras to be with these high-risk students at all times. In addition, the lack of consequences only reinforce a bad behavior instead of instilling the structure, safety, sorry, structured children so desperately need. Teachers, these good teachers that we have here in our school, are caught between a rock and a hard place. They are physically and emotionally tested to the limits by this new system. It is important to state that there is a lack of paras. Paras specifically trained in behavior issues are usually 1 to 3 ratio, if I'm correct. Those kids need the extra attention. Lead teachers are a direct, are to direct a large class and oversee the lessons. It is impractical to think that lead teachers can handle multiple children with behavioral issues in a newly-integrated system without the support and staff in place. These reasons alone are concerning, not to mention the increased incident reports being filed. I would be interested in a comparison of the numbers between last year and now. The phrase "trauma sensitivity" stems from a case management integration of kids and young adults with behavioral, emotional, aggressive behaviors into a standardized situation. As a whole, there are many concerns with this. We have seen a significant increase in documented aggressive behaviors. Not only do we have concerns for the safety of children, but there's a safety issue concerning with the teachers as well. We have been instructed from Principal O'Connell that numbers have, of incidences have decreased. However, the awareness and outbursts from the community has significantly increased this year. It's only November. We've only been at school for two and a half months. Should he be correct? We would like to see the exact numbers because I think this is part of the issue, that they're not correctly being documented and shared with the School Board Committee, as well as public information for concerned parents. A lot of these kids who have a history of trauma or issues in the home don't have ramifications or punishments at home. Without limits, we are doing the children a disservice. We're not teaching them limits inside the school system, and we are doing them more of a disservice than we realize. Teaching them now how to read and write is only part of the equation. We need to raise them to be good little human beings and function in society. Excuse me. If we do not teach them the limits or have consequences, by the time these children are teenagers, we're going to have a serious out-of-hand situation. Not only that, but we're teaching them how to be adults and function in society. There needs to be limits and consequences, especially for aggressive physical behaviors. One of the concerns is also the staffing ratios poor. On paper, it may seem adequate for budgeting reasons. However, the children who have behavioral and emotional issues will need extra attention. The paras and extra teacher assistance are not available at all times. Due to this, especially during recess when they are having less structure, the paras and assistants are not available for extra set of eyes and ears on the playground. I'm aware that the school is under direct, the direction of an outside company to review the structure and implement of this program. It seems odd that there has been a rise in student assaults in the elementary grades. This is elementary. This is ridiculous, sorry. This is why our children, sorry. Why is that our children seem like an integrative, trauma-sensitive experiment? Just because the money was spent doesn't mean we should continue this process and experiment on our children. It's clearly not working, and you should chalk it up. Lesson learned. Our previous structure was sufficient, yet still lacked enough paras. However, there was not the volume of assaults as children had extra eyes on them at all times. Now, I'd like to give you some specific examples. One example is a particular child, who I will not name out of respect for the child and his parents. We will call this kid Toby. As a concerned parent, I formally put a request that a bullying investigation be launched. This was after I spoke with Mr. O'Connell, Nurse Jamie, and Officer Jessica Heisinger and the state. My main concern was the incident that took place on 10/29 on the playground at Jox Elementary School with my son. Additionally, my son was bitten by another child on 10/10/19. I did not receive an incident report documenting this assault, which should have been automatically sent and disclosed. I had to follow up with him via phone, meaning Mr. O'Connell, that the other child's family has contacted about the child's behavior. When we spoke, I did not feel he perceived this issue as a serious one because simply the child's skin, my son's skin was not broken by the child's teeth. However, a first-grade student biting another student is not acceptable. I feel that the school is no longer a safe place for a child. On 10/28, my son's classmate was repeatedly punched until he had the wind knocked out of him. On 10/29, my son was put in a chokehold, lifted up off the ground, and punched in the right ear. On 10/30, Toby was witness pulling the back of another boy's shirt, choking him. On 10/31, Toby picked up another student and body slammed the student to the ground. On 11/4/19, Toby pulled, pulled the student off the monkey bars, and he ended up with a bruised tailbone.
Ms. Cody, I don't want to cut you off, I'm sorry, but I really would like to get to some of the other comments.
Pretty much wrapped up.
Okay.
But, I mean, we, we are concerned parents. We really just want to work with you guys. This is not something we're trying to work against you, but this is serious. Like, our little babies are being hurt, and it just, it breaks my heart. They're too little. So, I hope you guys take this just as seriously as we are.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colette O'Connor, Mason Road, speaking as a taxpayer. In past years, I've been able to go on and get the agenda, maybe on Thursdays. I looked Friday at the end of the day, and the agenda wasn't there. Yesterday, I had a hard time finding it. Granted, I was trying on my phone. And I know in the past, it's always been said to us that the website's being updated, that's why we can't get the agenda, well, we can't find things as easily. My question is, why is it all the other sites are being updated with all their new stuff, but it only seems to be the School Board meetings that are having an issue being updated? And when will that resolve itself so we can find them easier?
Well, I think the, the website is being worked on. I'm not sure what the timeline is on that. But I do know that the agenda are being posted within the times that they have to be legally, certainly. I think that they're generally up there on Fridays, you know, if, if not by Thursday.
It wasn't this week.
It was on Friday. It was up Friday afternoon.
It must have been late Friday, then.
It was up Friday afternoon.
Okay. The other thing in regards to the agendas that several people have noted is you guys are no longer posting who is leaving the district. It used to be posted every month of who was leaving, and we don't have that data anymore. So, I was wondering if we could start putting that back in to make people aware of who we're leaving, of who we're losing.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at that. It had been a common practice. I'm not sure, you know, why that dropped off.
The last request I have is, one of the big concerns is everyone's talking of how we're losing paras. And I know there's been the restructuring of special ed teachers in the classroom versus so many paras. Could we perhaps have the data for the next time of how many paras we have in district compared to last year? And how many are in the classrooms? How many special ed teachers in the classrooms? I think that's what a lot of us are looking for, is how are things spread out with students that are on IEPs and the services in the room compared to the past?
Okay.
Thank you.
Carla Boudreaux, Windsor Drive. I had a question about the agenda, since there is no exhibit talking about the trauma presentation tonight. Last meeting, I made a request verbally so that it would be on the minutes. And then, the day after, I sent the written request formally asking for an item to be put on the agenda, talking about our report on physical assaults, altercations, everything that we should be keeping data on and not difficult to report to put together because we should be supplying that to the state, we should be supplying that to Primex. And that was four weeks ago. I don't know if that's included in the presentation tonight?
I don't know.
We don't know.
I have to see.
Okay. So, Mr. Drew, with all due respect, I followed the rules that this Board has set up on what to do to put a request in for the agenda. Not only was it not done, but the arrogance of not even responding to me in four weeks. So, what else do we do aside from just going out there to the media? Because I followed your rules, and you did nothing. Dr. Heisinger did nothing. No one even acknowledged I asked for it. I'm doing your rules. You people are not doing your job. And the talk of these poor parents with young children getting hurt on a daily basis, it's... negligence at this point, that you're not doing something about it to stop it tonight.
Hello, Steve Martin, nine Harvest Drive. I think everyone's done a pretty good job detailing what's going on at the Jock's School. My wife and I have a son in first grade at Jock's and one of the eight focus students that I'm sure that will be talked about later is in his class. We've obviously had a lot of issues going through. I know there's been some chatter in the social media about people not getting communication, but I would like to thank Tim O'Connell. He has responded to every email that we've given him. He met with us in person. Mr. O'Connell, I do appreciate that. With that being said, my wife and I attended the trauma in schools information night a month or so ago. At that point, it was discussed that the school district had changed their philosophy on how they were going to deal with emotional problem children. And then the next breath, it was admitted that the staff was not trained properly to handle this new change in philosophy. And much like the previous speaker, that is pure negligence on the district's part. Something needs to be done, and it needs to be done now. Dr. Heisinga, I read your email from last Thursday, and it talked about personal safety plans, but it was really just a bunch of fluff. There was nothing in there that said what you guys are actually going to do. So I'm asking tonight, I understand you can't give specifics about individuals' children, but you can give us some ideas of exactly what you plan to do and what you plan to do right now to protect our children that are there.
I'll be teaching the presentation.
You will be? Okay. Thank you.
Steve Martin, five Constitution Court. Kevin, I'm a little concerned about your response to one of our citizens about using email to bring up issues that aren't on the agenda. And that's because law requires, if there's three or more board members participating in electronic email, that is a meeting of the school board. That then requires the school board to do minutes of that email stream and bring it to a meeting to be approved in public, at which time, that topic now is on the agenda so the people can come and bring their topics up and give you public comment. Now, I'm hoping the school board does do minutes of all electronic meetings. And I'm not seeing anyone saying yes.
People are free to email the board, and they can email the whole board. If there's no conversation, then there's no meeting.
So the purpose of the public policy, comment policy, is to protect the board from answering citizen questions? That is the, I have been involved in Milford Budget Committee and School Boards six years. Never was public comment limited to agenda items. As a business administrator, I have sat on 13 different school boards. Never has a school board limited public comment to agenda items. What you just said is, you can't ask questions at the meeting. You're allowed to send an email, but the board's not going to respond to it because then it will be a public meeting. So therefore, what is the option of a citizen who wants to discuss something with the board that's not on an agenda? Because I don't get the comfort that email is going to solve this problem.
Can I make a statement to that? I believe pursuant to School Board Policy 2150, any member of the school board could make a motion to open discussion or debate on a topic to the public if we believe that it warrants further discussion. So I think that because of the way that the new policy was written, that that's what school board members will need to do if they want to make that option available. So I think as dialect determines that, one of us hopefully will say, we'd like to make a motion pursuant to School Board Policy 2150 to open discussion or debate on. So this topic right now is getting that. So I was prepared to make that motion, but because it's on the agenda as, you know, a portion of the presentation, which I think it's unfortunate, I almost wish that the presentation could have come first and then the school board comment could come, I mean, the public comment could come second. And I think it almost makes sense to make a motion to have Kristi present the presentation on trauma-sensitive schooling and then allow public comment after that. So I did, I just made a motion to have Kristi present her trauma-sensitive schooling presentation first, and then pursuant to School Board Policy 2150 to open discussion or debate on that topic after her presentation. I think that we're going to have, it will save time in the long run.
Can I ask that you make?
That still doesn't.
And benefit everyone.
Still doesn't answer the issue of if the topic isn't on the agenda. This board needs to be open with the community. And I actually had hope, when there was a change on the board membership, that in fact, you were going to turn the tide and be more open. Every week, every meeting, I don't see it. I don't see this board reaching out to the community to be open. I see roadblocks being put in place so that the citizens and the members of the community can't have an open discussion of the issues. I just think this board needs to relook at that policy because you are basically stifling public comment at a public meeting.
Thank you. We've already gone over the time period. Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not turning you away. I just would like to ask you to be brief if you could, because we really do have some things.
I can be brief, I promise. Suzanne Chedine, Oxbury Woods Road. I'm commenting on the policy tonight, the board member ethics. I've noticed that as I was reading it, you did take a lot from the serving on a school board, legal responsibilities of a board member. I did want to notice that, I think that also should be included, was that was left off of your policy, rough draft, is the phrase of avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain. We have that in the employees' staff conduct and ethics, and I think it should also be there. Also not included in the board member ethics policy is anything about nepotism. And I think that is an extremely important one that you should look into and include. Many, many other school boards and other communities around us also have that nepotism policy, and I think it should be part of ours. On another note, I find there's an irony that last year during our June workshop days, all of our classified associates were brought to watch a film. I don't remember the title of it because I didn't see it, but one of the biggest messages in there was that the number of people that are there with the children during their youngest years in schools, the number of the PERS and everything, that's what makes the difference going forward. Putting the staff, putting the people there to help these children to learn how to be in a social setting, to learn how to be safe, putting the people there reduces the number in later years. And I think that we've really missed an opportunity here of taking care of our youngest children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcia Brew, 11 Foxmoor Circle. Part of my question is about the comments. The last meeting, Holly and Mike, we said you were open to discussing about putting in a second comment, or at least even moving it to the end of the meeting. That would have answered a lot of these questions already. I don't want to ever limit any parent comments because I think that they're important to be heard, but that would eliminate at least 20 minutes of the meeting so far as to have it at the end of the session. The other thing is, is I know of several parents, probably five or six parents that have emailed the board about moving next Monday's meeting due to parent-teacher conference. I think the meetings are more productive if the public's here to understand these processes. I think that should be taken into consideration when you're scheduling school board meetings, to not schedule them on the same night as events that parents are otherwise busy at the schools attending those, because those are the same parents that are in these stands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Sarah Martin, Harvest Drive. I'm here because, obviously, my son is in one of those classes that's having difficulties working in a school. I feel like I wanted to keep waiting and waiting and we didn't really, I felt like he needed transitional time, but after a month, we finally contacted the school and met with Bistro and everything, that was really helpful to us. What we also did was attend the trauma workshop that the school had, which I thought was very beneficial. And I know that they're doing a presentation tonight, but what I'm requesting is that they do a follow-up meeting. At Mr. Hatfield's suggestion at the last meeting, on October 18th, he said that it would be important for us to follow up and see what was, what the progress has been made since October 18th. In light of today's meeting, I believe that the attendance will be much in better attendance than unfortunately what we saw in October. So I do appreciate you saying we should have comments after, but I don't think that we're going to get the nitty-gritty of what we could get at a meeting that we had at Jock's. I mean, we were there for two and a half hours and they could answer all of our questions and not having a three-minute time limit. So I appreciate that, having that conversation after your presentation, John. I was one of the parents that asked you a bazillion questions in October, and I do request that we have another follow-up because you kept talking about those parent teams and those school teams, and I'd like to see what has been accomplished and what progress has been made since October 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll move on to reports and presentations. The superintendent's report.
All right. I'm going to try to be real quick because I know that the star of the show is after me.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait.
Yeah.
I skipped right over board member comments.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mike. Sorry about that. So, board member comments.
Right.
Yep.
Two things in regards to making a motion in regards to the report and presentation that we're going to have is allowing to, it was 2150, I believe, Holly? Is allowing public comment to the, to the presentation, after the presentation. I'd like to make a motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Mike to open, open public comment following the trauma-sensitive schooling presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And seconded by, yes. Mr. Wood?
Not sure if that motion's in order during board member comments. It would seem that it would be more prudent to put that when that item is being discussed. That's typically what happens.
I make their comments, or I lose it altogether.
I see your point, but rather than kind of shooting past this or forgetting it, I think we should just go ahead and allow it now, and that way we're, you know, we're covered. So I hear what you're saying, but I'm going to go ahead and allow the motion.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
Do you want to add some comment?
Yes.
So my concern is that we just had 25 minutes plus, 30 minutes plus of comments on that specific topic. I'm not sure what other comments are going to derive from, you know, allowing people another 20 or 35 minutes, and we've got other things to get through this evening, so it's concerning to add that much time to it.
Can I have a comment?
Did you say another, you had another comment, or is that?
That was my comment, is that we're adding a second public comment period on the topic that was discussed during public comment for the most part.
Okay, thank you.
Can I respond to that? So many of the people that got up and spoke had questions that can only be answered after they hear the information I hope will be contained in the presentation, and therefore, it's important.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would agree also. I mean, I'm actually here listening to everybody that do have concerns, and if there's more concerns that do come up, I want to make sure that we're able to answer them, or at least be able to be prepared to get an answer for public.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further. Yes.
After you remind the board members, board member conduct policy and not making comments to the other board members. Clearly, I'm not there, and it's inappropriate to make that kind of comment.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not following you. The comment, specifically what? I wasn't?
Mr. Hannon made a comment about being there and listening to people, and I'm there listening to people as well and watching the video feed, so I don't appreciate the insubordination. I think it's not appropriate.
I don't think that Mr. Hannon made that.
All right, let's not get into this right now. So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of opening public comment following the, the trauma-sensitive schooling presentation? Say aye.
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 All opposed?
I'm an aye as well, Mr. Chair.
I'm an aye as well. All right, so that motion carries. We will have a public comment period following the presentation. I hope someone will remind me. I imagine you will. Is there any further school board member comment?
I just want to make a comment. It's not prepared, but in listening to the parents speak and in looking at the emails that came in, I understand the importance and the reasons for adding special education teachers, social workers, and mental health specialists. However, I think that it's really imperative that we examine the data of how many PERS we had in the room last year versus how many PERS we have in the room currently, because I am very concerned for the safety of the children. And I think that, I also understand that if a child is not identified, they may not be eligible for a one-on-one. At the very least, we need to add more adults in the room. We need to document all incidents of violence, assaults, bullying, or safety. I am 100% of the belief that if we expose children who have not thus far been exposed to unnecessary trauma for the purpose of full integration of the few, that the potential detrimental impact on the many cannot be something that we put aside. And I think that if we had the best intentions with the new policy and it's not working, that I'm a firm believer that we're going to have to take a deeper look at it and potentially Plan B it. So I'm very much interested in hearing what the presentation contains tonight, but I also want to make it be very apparent that something has to change.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this past month, we had the Office of Civil Rights come in and do a review of the ATC Center at the high school. We're going to receive their report in January. It was a very good visit. They had very nice things to say about the programs we offer students and the innovation at the high school. They're also going to be highlighting many areas where we are not in compliance. The good news is that they were very, very complimentary of the fact that we have been working very diligently over the last 10 months to address a lot of areas in Title IX as well as Title IV that they have identified as areas we need improvement. So that was very positive, and they were very pleased with the progress that we've been making. So we'll get that final report come January. The ATC Center won $7,000 in the BioMade Advanced Biomaterials Federal Grant. I just want to say congratulations to Vaso Pardinuti and Jennifer Di Maria for their work on attaining this funding. The aim of the grant is to advance the design and manufacture of biomaterials, and I know that those funds are going to be put towards the STEAM night upcoming in the next couple of weeks. Tonight, I'm going to give a high-level summary of the 2021 budget proposal. I would just want to say thank you to the administrative team, many who are here tonight for all their contributions this year. This was a real team effort. And I also want to say a very, very special public thank you to Jane Fortson, Kristi Mieschow, Laura Seibert for putting in many weekends, Saturdays and Sundays here in the office to get the document done. We'll be posting the district budget proposal tomorrow afternoon on the district website, and I'll be holding a community forum for questions and answer this Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM at Town Hall. And Saturday morning, we have our yearly 8:00 AM in the high school library this year, our annual joint budget board committee meeting to discuss the budget in more detail. So that'll be Saturday morning at 8:00 AM. Also, this year, for the first time, I think Tony said in about 15 years, or close to that, we're allowing middle schoolers to take courses for high school credit. So I just want to say thank you to the middle school and high school administration for working together. This is something that I've really wanted to see come back to pass. So this year, students who pass So this year, students who pass the high school final exam or high school assessment as they determine in French, Spanish, or algebra will receive high school credit and be able to jump a class and take Spanish II, French II, or geometry at the high school, which is outstanding. Right now, we have 22 enrolled in French at the middle school eligible for high school credit, 51 in algebra, and 62 in Spanish. So again, I just want to thank the middle school and high school administration for that great collaboration. I think that that's wonderful and allows us to really accelerate students who are ready for it. Also, another great thing we're doing at the middle school, we have two groups of girls who are working with Girls Inc. out of Manchester. And at the middle school, the focus is on developing leadership potential in young girls, and this has been organized with the help of our new school social worker who's been doing a lot of outreach and partnership with the community. So I just want to say thanks to Tony for supporting that, and thank you to the school social worker for all of her work really in developing the leadership potential of young girls, so that's awesome. Also, our busing contract is up at the end of this year, so I think on one of our next agendas, we should begin talking about options as to next steps. Do we want to extend one year, go out now? Do we want to do some creative options that we could take advantage of, like doing multiple district bids? Other districts close to us are coming up for contract too, so the possibility of partnering with other districts to get a better rate might be something we explore, but that's something that we should probably discuss soon. I do want to address bullying. There's been a lot of talk about bullying across the district. I wanted to share with everyone our bullying data so far this year, and I want to separate out, you know, what's happening with the presentation tonight on, you know, therapeutic services and behavioral supports and bullying. There are two separate sets of data that we're going to discuss, but we've had 12 total reports made district-wide, K-12. Of the total 12 reports, five are still currently under investigation, so only seven have been completed at this time. Four of those have been substantiated, meaning that there was bullying that occurred, and three were unsubstantiated, so there was no findings of bullying. So by school, eight of the 12 reports were made at Jox Memorial School. One report of bullying was made at HP. Two reports of bullying were made at the middle school, and one report of bullying was made at Milford High School. And those substantiated at Jox Memorial, of the eight reports made, three were substantiated, five still are currently under investigation. At HP, one was made, a report, and that report was unfounded. At Milford Middle School, two reports were made and two were unfounded, and at Milford High School, one report was made and one was substantiated. So those are, that's our bullying totals for this year, and we're going to continue to track that data as we continue. We take bullying very seriously, and one of the things that's a key aspect of our strategic plan is addressing social and emotional learning. It is part of our Goal Two culture, and another step that we're going to be taking in regards to bullying is on December 4th, Alan Crop from Drummond Woodsum Legal Team is going to be coming to meet with our administrative team to do training on bullying and investigation procedures. He's also going to be doing a full review of our policies, procedures, and forms. Additionally, we have set up a tentative date, so everyone write this down because we really want great attendance at this meeting. Attorney Crop is going to do a parent informational night for us, an evening on bullying, and that tentative date is set for January 23rd. And so we wanted to make it far enough in advance so that we have a good showing from the public. I think it's going to, he's going to give us a lot of information on what bullying is and isn't, and the procedures that you should expect to see as part of the school, including the types of reporting that parents can do. And finally, Mr. Chair, my report, congrats to all the boys and girls athletic teams at the high school for an incredibly successful sports season. It was a real joy to see quite a few of the teams play this year. I really enjoyed my time, and we just really have some talented athletes, and they're not just talented athletes on the field, they're really incredible young people off the field, and they do a lot of community work and a lot of community service, so I just want to say kudos to those kids and to the coaches who promote that off-the-field work. So thank you.
Thank you. Any board member comments on the superintendent's report? With that, we'll move on to our next item, the trauma-sensitive schooling presentation with our assistant superintendent, Kristi Micho and John Burn.
Great, thank you, and thank you, Jerry, for bringing that presentation up for me.
Should we move to the seats for this?
Yes, you probably would want to, yes, thank you. Thank you. All right, good. Good evening, everybody. I'm Kristi Micho, Assistant Superintendent, and joining me this evening is Mr. John Veer. Mr. Veer and his team from Walker Consulting have been working with us here at Jox Memorial School as well as Heron Pond School since late August, the start of this school year. They have done some outstanding work with us in a variety of capacities, working with us weekly and on some, on some weeks, more than once a week. They've been involved with work such as some training, some consulting and planning, as well as observing and making recommendations. So Mr. Veer is going to join me tonight through part of this presentation to give you a little bit more detailed information about the work that's occurring at both Jox Memorial School and Heron Pond. To begin, I want to say thank you for the opportunity this evening to share some very important information with you about the work that our district, our schools, and our educators are doing to support students and families, as well as to respond to the significant and concerning behaviors, behavioral challenges that have occurred. I am impressed to see such a showing here tonight. That is evidence to me and to all of how much you care, how much you advocate really for your own children, but also you're advocating for all children here in the Milford School District. So thank you to all of you who came out tonight, and thank you to the board for the opportunity to present. So as you're aware, recently, as, as we know, in the last couple of months, Jox Memorial School has faced some significant behavior challenges with a small number of students. When we talk about significant behavior, we're talking about physical disruptive and outwardly negative behaviors by some of our students that have certainly caused for some concern by our students, our parents, and our educators. I want to stress to you that this is concerning to myself, Dr. Heisinger, as a community, our educators, we are all equally concerned. And I think, again, the fact that you're here tonight does send an important message to me, and that is that you do want to work together and that we do want to get to a solution. So thank you for being here. The information is important for you to hear, but also, and thank you to the board for voting in favor of the question and answer, and that's also extremely important as well. So thank you. What I'm going to share with you, Mr. Veer, will share with you this evening, is that we are acting swiftly to develop and implement solutions to this high priority need. We are building systems and structures that do take time. Unfortunately, there is no quick fix to putting systems and structures in place for long-term impact. That's what we want, long-term impact. No mandates, because as you can imagine, if we're not putting these systems and structures in place, we're not providing the skills that the students are in deficit of, we will have greater issues come middle school, high school, and then into adulthood. So we are doing, you know, some very swift work. Mr. Veer will tell you that he has recognized the work that's been done in our district as compared to work that he is doing and his team is doing in schools throughout New England has been impressive to him. So I'll let him speak a little more about that. But as Dr. Heisinger and I said in our email out to you last week, we realized that that's not quite enough. We also need to put a more immediate response plan in place, and that's where we described, loosely described to you the safety plans. Tonight, I'll go into a little more detail as to what we talk, what we mean, what we talk about, when we talk about safety plans for, for some of our individual students that are experiencing challenging behavior. Just to show you a little bit of the behavior in terms of data, again, I'm going to really try hard in my presentation to respond to the many great points that all of you folks made as you were coming down and speaking during public comment. One was, what does the data actually look like? In August/September at Jox Memorial School of our kindergarten and our first-grade students, the school-wide behavioral incidences were tracked. These are minor as well as major infractions. We had 160 infractions. The number in parentheses was the number of students that totaled that number of incidents. So as, as we go along, I'll describe the numbers to you. August/September, 160 incidences, 25 students made up that number. In October, 110 incidents, 29 students made up that total. And so far, this month of November, up to the 14th, last Friday, we have recorded 23 incidents, eight students made up that number. There was lots of talk at the start of the school year about having to evacuate classrooms. 10 evacuations of classrooms occurred in August/September, four in October, and we've had to evacuate the classrooms one time thus far this month. As you can see through these numbers, that our new systems and structures in place, as well as our teachers that are applying the new training they're receiving, also the work of our social workers and our teams to connect families to the outside supports and services is beginning to have an impact. It's hard, I think, when, when you're hearing different incidences and not seeing the data to really know what's actually happening in the school. So I'm pleased to bring you the data this evening, but I'm not at all standing up here and saying the job is done and we're looking, we're looking better. So I'll move on. Okay, at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Mr. Veer to come up for the next couple of slides. Again, he's been working closely with both Jox Memorial School and Heron Pond. We are working with his team to develop systems and structures. These are critical features that have to be put in place. There are the processes, there's the protocols. He's going to begin to describe some of those to you here on the lower part of this slide, and then go into some more specific details about spaces and, and structures, systems that have begun to be put in place at Jox Memorial and Heron Pond School. So I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you, Mr. Veer, for being here this evening. Would you like to have this little tool here?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So to members of the school board and the superintendent, and parents and other members of the community, thank you for having me here tonight, and I'm hoping that I can share some things that will be helpful to you as you think about the issues that we're dealing with right now and think about moving into the future as partners. I did want to explain something about how I ended up here. So I think the first, most important part of the work that I do in public schools today as a consultant is that I'm a public school parent twice over now. I have a youngster, a young man who's now 25, who went through the public schools of two different school districts in Massachusetts, graduated from high school, went out to college and graduated from college, and I now have an eight-year-old fourth grader in one of the large elementary schools in our neighborhood, Dorchester in Boston, by my second marriage. And I have to say that I'm a better dad today and I'm a better consultant today because I have this opportunity with a young eight-year-old to do it again and do it better. And so my perspectives on, on the challenges of being a public school parent and being a public school professional look very different to me today, and I think I understand the challenges better. I have been in the field of special, public special education for 49 years. I started my career in 1970 as a young teacher of children, middle school kids with significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges, and that particular population of kids has remained my true focus for my entire career. I worked as a teacher in a residential school and a teacher in a private special education day school before I went to the Boston Public Schools as the founding principal of a network of schools for kids with significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges. When I retired for the first time in 1991, I started a consulting group, and that group stayed together for 10 years, and we worked in public school districts as large as New York City, Chicago, and Philadelphia, and as small as a single school, school district in rural Rhode Island, focusing on children with social, emotional, behavioral challenges. And interestingly enough, the children are the same everywhere. So the challenges that some children here are experiencing are the same challenges that children all over the country in all different kinds of communities and school districts are experiencing. I have spent 25 years total leading a consulting group. I did return to the Boston Public Schools as Assistant Superintendent for Student Services and Special Education, where we had 11,000 children with disabilities in 130 schools. The children in our, what were called strands or pathways in, in the elementary, middle, and high schools for kids with social, emotional, behavioral challenges at the outset had all the same challenges that we're, that you're experiencing now, that the district leaders are addressing now here. So the children are not different, and the challenges in public schools are not different. I have to say, I think it's important for you to know that I first was contacted by your superintendent last June, who directly called me at my office to ask me to be of assistance here, followed very quickly by another phone call from your Director of Special Education, and that started a process of figuring out how we could be helpful, if at all. By the time August came, Tim O'Connell at Jox had contacted me and started the process of my actually spending time here with a couple of my colleagues. So the work at Jox actually began just before school opened in August, when Tim called together a critical group of staff, teachers and, and support people at Jox to begin to figure out what was, what, what the challenges were there. He was new, and I was new at about the same time, and with the help of staff who weren't new, we began the process of understanding what was going on. So I became, right at the beginning, I was invited to be a critical partner to the school district. Your superintendent asked me to be critical and be helpful, and Tim, and followed by Chantal at, at Heron Pond, the same thing. They expected me to point out the things that were needed to be addressed as soon as possible, and then help address them. So it wasn't good enough for me to be helpful, I needed to be critical at the beginning, and I, I hope I wasn't too critical. And it wasn't good enough for me to be critical, I had to do something that would be helpful. So both of those things went together here right at the beginning. The first thing I did was engage in a very short-term critical review in each one of the schools. the schools. So I took the position that I needed to know more about this before I could be helpful. And so I was, the response I got was, fine, do your review, but let's get on with it. So by the end of September in both places, I think it was actually by the third week of September, we had already moved to the point of figuring out, what were we gonna do about this? What I found were the following things. First of all, on the part of everybody that was working hard to meet the needs of children and help them be successful in school, there were skill deficits. That is, there were things that various people needed to know more about in order to be more effective with the students. And that extended across all levels of the adults working with the kids in the schools. Secondly, there was a lack of appropriate structures and processes in the schools to address the needs of the kids who had the most significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges. This is against the backdrop in both schools, and I assure you understand this even more than I do. The vast majority of the kids in both schools were highly successful, given the approaches to social, emotional, behavioral supports that were already in place. And it was a very small number of kids who had very significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges for whom we were not powerful enough. And third, there was an incomplete system of meeting the needs of these children. And if I've learned anything in my career, it is that individual providers and individual activities that we do with children are necessary and always will be necessary, but they are totally insufficient when it comes to kids with social, emotional, behavioral challenges. Now, just a quick note on how did the public school system of the United States get here? So I was beginning my career in 1970, when the first federal special education law did not yet exist and was yet to be developed. What is true about our system of special education in this country is, this is the best place in the world for children with disabilities to go to public schools. And at the same time, children with social, emotional, behavioral challenges are the last group of kids for whom the schools have become accessible. Now, I started my career when children in wheelchairs did not attend most public schools, because those schools were not accessible for kids in wheelchairs. We came to understand very quickly what it meant to be accessible for a kid in a wheelchair: ramps, wide enough doors, proper controls on doors and windows. It has taken us until very recently to understand what it takes for a school to be accessible for kids with social, emotional, behavioral challenges. Now we have some very clear understanding about what that takes, and schools and school districts all over the country are trying to become accessible for these kinds of kids. It is not good enough to think well of the kids, or to work really hard, or to be totally committed to them, to them and their success. That's not enough to make schools accessible for these kinds of kids. On the other hand, because the schools are not accessible does not mean that it is a good idea, in fact, it is not legal to exclude these kids from general education experiences or from the public schools totally in some school districts, because those schools are not accessible for the kids. Now, making schools accessible for kids with significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges, the field knows a lot about this now. And I want to talk very quickly about what does that look like. I will start my remarks by saying, however, in 25 years of consulting, there is a very small group of districts that I've worked with that is moving as quickly and seriously as this one is to become accessible for these kids. I can count on one hand, over 25 years of consulting, the school districts that have moved deliberately and quickly to start to do the right things for these kids. Remember what I said: the good work of individual providers for individual kids will always be critical, will be necessary, but it won't ever be sufficient if we don't put in place appropriate, comprehensive systems for making the schools accessible for these kids. Now, there are three main features to helping schools, or for schools to be accessible for these kinds of kids. One, an appropriate portfolio of skills on the part of administrators, professional staff, and paraprofessional staff. Now, there are lots of research-based approaches to working with these kids. I'm not saying that everybody needs to know everything, but the district needs to choose the portfolio of approaches that all the providers are going to be trained in and then use with the kids. In fact, one approach is not right, because one approach doesn't work with all the kids. The district, under the leadership of people like your Director of Special Ed and your superintendent, needs to be the ones deciding what are the approaches. Now, Walker has come forward, in the interest of moving things as quickly as possible, and said, here are the first three that you should consider getting started with, and they are: trauma-sensitive practices, solution-focused approaches, and cognitive behavioral approaches. Now, there are others, and some of the others, like zones of regulation, responsive classroom, these are really wonderful, effective approaches that people can learn, and when used differentially for different kinds of kids, can be really effective in helping kids with significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges be successful in school. But professional development in very targeted skill areas for all of the providers and their supervisors is critically important. Now, that work has already started here, but I'll bet that people here, again, you know better than I do, there's a real shortage of professional development time in everybody's schedules. And frankly, I've not had the privilege of working in a school district anywhere where they have enough time for professional development. So we're squeezing out as much of the professional time as we can, but we're putting in place another structure and process where that professional development can occur in a new structure that I'll speak about in a couple of minutes. Secondly, there is a shortage here, as in most places, of specific organizational support for the work that we're doing with these kids. Right? Now, the specific approach to organizational support that we are building here is called the service team approach. These teams have been established at Jax and are about to be established at Heron Pond. This provides around every class of kids where there are focused children in the class, that there's a team of people, of inside people and partners to that team, who are meeting now at Jax. We're just entering the second cycle of meetings, they're meeting every other week, because that is the most amount of time that Tim was able to squeeze into the schedule to get these teams of people together. Now, it is that team, called a service team, for each of the classes, where the professional development with their peers will continue to occur. And Walker now is providing process consultants and content consultants to the service teams at Jax. So not only are the service teams established, and we're providing consultants to those teams, and we'll be starting to provide clinical consultants, experts in social, emotional, behavioral issues, starting next month. Now, this is a wonderful example of how quickly the Milford Schools is doing this. I have been working on this approach with school districts for years. When I first made this recommendation to Tim and the other critical staff at Jax, I was notified a week later that the service teams would start a week later. So within two weeks, Tim had the teams organized and the schedule worked out, and the team started meeting when he said they were gonna start meeting. That has never occurred in my career. Third, these kinds of kids need two categories of strong social, emotional, behavioral support: in-class and out-of-class.
Can I ask you just to go a minute?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was speaking about those things.
Right. Yeah, I'm gonna skip over that first one, I'll come back to it. So it is true, I'll say this from my own experience and from better thinkers than I am in the field, it is true that children with significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges, at certain times in their development, and certain times over the course of the year, can be well-supported in class, with the right approaches in class, and there are other times, when they need to be getting their support outside the classroom. And that process, that structure, is not in existence here, yet, until tomorrow or the day after tomorrow. We call them in-class support structures and out-of-class support structures. Let me talk about them in the following way. There are four such structures and processes. The first one is called the calming structure and process, and it happens in the calming corner in the classroom and in the calming center outside the classroom. This is to help children who are beginning to get anxious, agitated, or escalated, there are different ways of looking at that, to not go there, to calm down. And the process in the calming corner and the calming center is, we teach them to calm themselves. And so part of the professional development that is ongoing from this point forward is to teach everyone the various approaches to teaching kids to calm themselves. They won't calm themselves at first, they don't know how to do it, they can be taught, but in order to be taught, the staff needs to know what they're doing. So there's a calming corner in the classroom, there's a partner room in the school that's being developed in both schools, which is called the calming center. And the purposes of those spaces is to help kids calm down. For some kids that we're now working with, that's what they need. And when we are successful at doing that, their outcomes will improve in school. Second, is called the planning corner and the planning center. The planning corner is in the room, the planning center is somewhere else, outside the room. And this is the problem-solving structure and process where, if what's going on is that the child has become, he's having a difficult time managing a problem he has gotten himself into in class. The kindergarten version of this and the fifth-grade version of this are very different. But there are some kids where they're not agitated or escalated, they're obstinate, they're engaging in oppositional defiant behavior. They want to win the power struggle. When that's what's going on, we give the child some very brief amount of time in the planning corner, where their job is to sit quietly, think about what just happened, and then have a discussion with a member of the staff. And now, going forward, those discussions will be based on a solution-focused approach to problem-solving with kids. It's a very singular approach to problem-solving with kids, and it is not, what happened, why did it happen, and what are you gonna do it now, young man? It is focused on, what do we want this to look like after your planning time, and how are we going to get there? Don't forget, if they could solve problems, they would. So many of them do this because they don't know how. They've never been taught, or at least they've never learned. They may have been taught, but they haven't learned. Okay, so that's the planning center. The next room is called the safety center, and there is no safety center in the classroom, there's only a safety center outside the classroom. So when the child has become, I'm sorry, I got thrown off by the flash there. It just caught me, nobody ever photographs me. So when a child has our attempts to prevent escalation or to de-escalate once it starts by using the calming or planning structures and processes, then the child can be escorted to the safety center before they need to be restrained. Or if it happens like a flash, then we will escort them to the safety center. I, for one, do not agree with evacuating classes. I believe that children should be moved so that they can be attended to outside the classroom. Okay? But you can imagine, especially, I'm being the parent of an eight-year-old, it's already happened to me, he at times in his young life has escalated so quickly that I didn't help him de-escalate. And I'm really glad that I was trained in CPI. Have you heard of CPI, Crisis Prevention Institute? Many staff here in Milford are trained. I knew how to hold my son when he was out of control and hold him safely, right? Many people are already trained, other people will become trained. I think a lot of people here are okay with the idea that with appropriate training, we should be holding these children, all right? And in the state, there are very clear regulations about when we can do that. And we are going through that, making sure that that's clear to everybody here. But I want to emphasize that without a safety center in the school, that's an appropriately-designed room in the school, physically restraining youngsters in their classrooms or in the hallway can not only be destructive to the educational environment and the safe environment for all kids, it can be dangerous for the kid who's being restrained, it can be dangerous for the staff who are doing the restraint, okay? So we're putting that in place. And the final center, which I think most of us forget about, but it's part of the model, is something we call the resolution center. And the resolution center at Jax is Tim O'Connell's office, and the resolution center at Heron Pond is Cheval's or Chris's office, okay? I spent 13 years as a principal in the Boston Public Schools. At the beginning, I was an administration of one, and my office was the resolution center. I spent all day long on duty as the resolution officer of the school, which meant that if all of our att- which meant that if all of our attempts to calm and problem-solve with kids using the corners and the centers didn't work, then they were going to be coming to see me. That function of the ultimate authority in the school is very, very important. We should not de-emphasize that or make it informal. We need to talk to children about the fact that we don't do office discipline referrals here. We do resolution meetings in the principal's office. And that we use a solution-focused approach, and for some kids at certain ages also, or alternatively, a cognitive behavioral approach. But it's Tim and Shival who are, I'm sorry, Chantel. I work with another principal whose name is Shival, sorry about that, Chantel. So, so there's the calming structure and process, the planning structure and process, that's problem-solving. There is the safety center process and the resolution process, okay? Now, to be clear, I want to be really clear. I don't know about you, parents in the room especially, or staff who are parents. My son didn't follow things in chronological order or logical order, you know? I thought he should go from calming to planning, to my having to hold him. He often went right to my having to hold him, right? In part because I didn't do a good job de-escalating, or in part because that's just what was going on with him. So I don't mean to suggest that the calming structure and process, the planning, problem-solving structure process, the safety process, that those go in that order. Sometimes you have to move the youngster to the safety center immediately, and you didn't have time to do calming, and you didn't have time to do problem-solving, okay? I wanted to say something about the service team structure and process. One of the big mistakes that we make in public schools today is thinking that if you just had the right teacher, all kids would be fine. Not true. I have met some of the best teachers in public schools in the United States in my consultancy and in my two children's career in school. They did not succeed with every kid in their class. As a teacher, I thought I was wonderful. I didn't succeed with all the kids in my classroom. Lone Rangers working with kids with significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges, Lone Rangers typically don't succeed. Good teams of professionals and paraprofessionals can often succeed with kids with significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges. A special feature of service teams is you are sitting down presently at Jox every other week with the other people who are responsible for your class. It's not just the teacher. It's the teacher and the social worker and the counselor. And that team has the authority to invite anyone else as a partner. And what makes a person a partner is they know a lot about the child, they know a lot about this problem, or they know a lot about the solution. So people like the psychologist, the school psychologist, the phys ed teachers who know all the kids and have special relationships with many of them, the parent. So there is a very, now, a very real structure and process in place where you may get a call from, if you are the parent of one of the kids with the most challenges, you may get a call inviting you to come in and be a partner to the service teams. We're not going to, that's not going to be a time when we can blame the child or blame you, but it's a time when you can be our partner to solve the problem. Okay, let me go back one slide. There are some things that already exist to one extent or another, at least at Jox, and I think it's true from what I've seen at Heron Pond so far. There are some conditions that need to exist before any of these structures or processes. One is behavioral expectations. There need to be behavioral expectations in every class and behavioral expectation in the school. And while they don't have to be identical, they can't conflict with each other. You shouldn't do anything without making sure you're clarifying your behavioral expectations, saying, here's what we want you to do, and then teaching those things, okay? So the second item, which is not on the slide, because I think it's, for a lot of us, it's now included in the first one, is behavioral teaching and re-teaching. So I don't know whether you noticed this with your kids, I noticed it with mine, is if I do it with him 100 times, he gets it, no matter what it is. And for me to expect him to get it on the first or second time is unrealistic. So they actually need to learn how to meet the behavioral expectations. That's a teaching task for the staff of the school. And then, very specific approaches which come with CPI, but we're going to build on those in other ways. How do we prevent the escalation of a negative event? Early on, how do we recognize the early indicators? And what do we do to prevent? And we're putting in place some things you can do to prevent. You can give the student a calming time in the calming corner or in the calming center. If you're seeing an early indication of what you know is going to become a negative event, don't wait for it to become a negative event, move on that. Likewise, there are very specific approaches to de-escalation, which are part of the training, probably more the training than the actual restraint, is de-escalation. So how we help kids de-escalate. And then the final one, which I actually observed in the early days at Jox, which is something we call at Walker, time and space. Which means, sometimes, somebody who's picked up on a developing problem could take the youngster for a walk and talk to them. Using a solution-focused conversation, but take them for a walk. And don't feel like you're just avoiding work, or the kid's just avoiding work. It can be extremely valuable if you take a walk and talk to the youngster early on in the sequence of interventions with the kid. We call it at Walker, giving the child time and space. And we give them, now, don't forget, these are kids who are living in residence at Walker or going to one of our day schools, but we give them all the time and space they need to be calm and de-escalate. Okay, I've said a lot, let me just see if, I think that pretty much covers it. I do, having, being a dad of an eight-year-old, I have very high expectations for his public elementary school. And sometimes they meet my expectations and sometimes they don't. I have to say, when it's your young child who is now anxious to go to school and/or has been threatened in some way at school, nothing that should be being done can happen quickly enough. I do believe, and I'm a critical friend here, I'm not trying to make people feel good in the school district here, I'm a critical friend. This district is moving more quickly than any other district that I've worked with. I think that the, when the superintendent and Christie added, working with Tim, added a week or so ago, the emergency short-term interventions that are in place now, I think that was a very good move as we ramp ourselves up to become more skilled at doing this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Veer. So, as Mr. Veer mentioned, putting these structures and systems in place, ensuring that people are properly trained, and that also that people have the opportunities to practice their new training and put those practices in place in the classroom. We've recognized that that does take time, and that we'll need to have a more immediate solution. And so recognizing that that is required, I want to share with you what that looks like. As I believe one of the gentlemen that came up here earlier this evening said, FERPA student privacy rights does not allow us to give you detailed information about each student's individual safety plan. But I am going to share with you that school leadership is working in collaboration with parents and families, school counselors, mental health workers, special educators, classroom teachers, all of these folks are coming together to develop these safety plans for a small number of children. Now, the safety plans are very individual, they do look different for different children, but they might include any one of these items here that I've listed. So for some students, an alternative schedule has been put into play, where students will actually begin their day outside of the classroom. Sort of a check-in when they're first coming in in the morning. It allows an adult to sort of monitor, you know, what that student's emotions, what their behavior looks like at the onset of their day. We do know that some students that do come from trauma or that do have mental health issues, whatever that may be, that challenge might be for a student, that sometimes at the very start of their day, that can be the high point for them. Other students, it's those less structured environments, it's during recess time. Or maybe it's when they're easily triggered during a frustration time at any point in the day, sometimes lunchroom, that type of thing. Different situations, different timing for student behaviors, that's all very individual. For many of our students, they'll be working one-on-one or already are and have been working one-on-one or in very small groups to receive that direct instruction and counseling support in the areas of their skill deficits. So we've been talking a little bit about what is dysregulation. Many children need to learn coping skills, so how to regulate their bodies. They'll learn a lot of that in their interactions with adults in the calming space or the calming center, in the planning center. We want to ensure that we're, again, not just putting Band-Aids on things, but we're actually developing the skills necessary in kiddos to be successful in school and in life. For many of these students, you'll see an increased supervision as well as increased monitoring. We have also put an additional paraeducator in the classrooms, the homeroom of the students that the students are in. Some students might see for a period of time, an alternative recess or an alternative lunchroom schedule. And again, maybe an alternative to some of those less structured times during their day when that negative behavior is displayed. We do have those service teams meeting. As of right now, those service teams are meeting every other week for students. We are working with Mr. O'Connell with some of our students. Part of their safety plan may be that those meetings for those particular students are, the service teams are actually weekly. If we go back to the slide that talks a little bit about that service team, the work of those teams are to be problem-solving, planning for instruction, planning for intervention, developing an action plan for that child's upcoming days and upcoming weeks in school. And then, paramount to all the work that we're doing in the schools is the work that our social workers are doing with families to ensure that they're accessing the supports of the community, those wraparound services. And that's crucial. So that's also part of a student's safety plan. A little bit ago, a mom was standing up here and she said, gosh, this is elementary school. Why are we seeing such an increase in this kind of behavior in our babies? And you know, the sad reality is that I go, and Dr. Heisinger, we go to meetings with superintendents at the state level monthly. And superintendents are talking about, across the state, as well as across this nation, of kiddos that, our youngest kiddos, our five and six-year-olds, are experiencing these significant needs in the area of social, emotional, behavior. And again, they're our youngest students. And what we've learned a lot in a major study in our country is about ACEs. And ACEs are adverse childhood experiences. Do you know that one in every four kiddos have had at least one adverse childhood experience prior to becoming school age? And those adverse childhood experiences can be everything from a death of a parent to the divorce of a family, to, you know, loss of a sibling. There's just so many traumatic events that children encounter, and they've been impacted by. What we know is these ACEs are actually impacting not only students, their learning, but also their behavior in school. And we're just seeing so much of that in our town, across the state, and really across the nation. Also, think about the opioid crisis. We've been talking about the opioid crisis now five, six years. We hear from hospitals, we hear from people out in the community doing research around this, that there are children every single day being born addicted in some way to opioids. And we're hearing that those numbers in hospitals are just growing and growing. So that is the sad reality. And you know, New Hampshire's still one of those leading states that are affected by opioids. So again, just, again, more information that helps us to realize, why? Why our babies, why our youngest kids, you know, that we're seeing this? Again, it's important for us to know that these are not just behaviors that we're seeing in students that have an identified educational disability. We're also seeing these behaviors with what we call our regular ed students, students that have not been identified as special education students. And so, you know, that's also important. Sometimes people think that, oh, these are just behaviors that you see of special education students, and they're not. So, you know, this is so important that you folks came out tonight. We need to keep this conversation going. We will indeed have ongoing parent and community presentations. Mr. O'Connell, you had a team of experts, a panel of experts come out on October 17. You had a small showing that night, I think you had less than a handful of parents that came out on that night. Please, we're going to continue to have more public presentations, come out and learn more about it, and also, you know, share your suggestions and your ideas. We want to be partners in this challenge. Ongoing professional training. I think there was a question about when are our teachers receiving this training? Is that all, is that some? We have done whole-staff trainings, both at Jox, Wednesday afternoon during our early release. We have the Walker group coming in and doing whole-staff training at Heron Pond. We've also been doing small-group training as well with people in different areas of specialty, as well as those classroom teachers. As Mr. Veer spoke about, some of that training looks like the strength-based languages, Miracle Question. If you read through the Connections newsletter that went out last week in the section that is written through Curriculum Instruction Professional Learning, I put a little snippet in there, some sample language around scaling. And, you know, feel free, the language that our teachers are using in the classrooms, you know, as the kids are coming home and maybe, you know, you're hearing of that language, feel free to use it in your home as well. I think consistency of language being used is great for kids. And then again, you know, as our educators are being trained, that these approaches are being built into the classrooms. And so, and again, you know, it takes time, but I do want to emphasize just how hard everybody is working, so. In, you know, in closing, before we sort of open up for some questions, I do want to thank you for your understanding, I want to thank you for your patience, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being here tonight. It's important that we continue to work together because every child here in Milford is important to us. So, again, thank you for your attention this evening, and feel free, obviously, from the board, questions, and then if you choose to open that up. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristy, and Mr. Veer as well. Very informative. And I think I probably speak for a lot of people. Well, it's, you know, a little disappointing to hear that we didn't really have a framework in place to start with, that we're certainly not alone there. And it's great to see that, you know, we've taken some proactive measures to, you know, to get this in place as quickly as we can, so thanks again. Are there any other board member comments first?
I just had a question. You mentioned in both presentations, three separate areas. I forget what you called the three separate rooms. The fourth, I know, was the principal's office. Have we allocated space for those three, the calming, planning, and safety rooms?
Just in the last week and a half, both schools have identified likely spaces. I'll be reviewing those spaces this week when I'm in the schools.
I know that we're on a tight space situation, so I'm wondering where you've identified those spaces.
Yeah, we've had to, as John said, we're moving very, very quickly to address these needs for our students. And we have, the last few days at Jox, had to shuffle some staff around to make room for the calming center and the planning center, safety center. All those spaces are now in place. Our work on Wednesday with Walker will be to talk to staff and eventually to students on how to, what are the protocols for accessing this space, who is supervising these spaces. All those things will be discussed this week. But we have had to do a lot of work, and I'm going to say this, you know, the space need at Jox is real. We have a lot of needs for, not just, you know, for this program, for becoming and adopting some of these spaces to work with our students, but also some other instructional space needs. So, it has been challenging to try to make this work.
And is this a temporary solution, or are you planning to take this space and permanently allocate it?
These spaces will be part of what we do for the time being, yes, for a long time.
Would it be possible for you to, like, send that information to the school board? Which spaces were taken away?
Yep, I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, open it for public comment, as we agreed to do earlier.
Rob Canty, Webster Street. Just a couple of quick questions. One, you had said that this was one of the districts that has moved very quickly. I'm just curious, as far as like the behavior concerns in the other districts, were they a lot more significant, or would you say that they were comparable? Or, I was just curious as far as... Yeah, so... Because Boston's definitely tough, so.
Yeah, the behaviors are the same everywhere.
Okay.
Now, how big your school is makes it feel different. And Jox is a fairly small school. But when you get into a larger school, and it sounds like you've had that experience, you know, you have the same kinds of behaviors.
I guess I meant districts. I'm sorry.
Oh, districts.
Yes.
No, it's interesting. So, what I would say is, the children and their needs in the Boston Public Schools are exactly the same as the kids and their needs here.
Right.
Now, there are more of them, a lot more of them, but they're the same.
Okay. Thank you. No, it's okay. I just had one other question. With, it sounds awesome, like the supports that are in place for these kids. And what about the classrooms that don't have these kids in them? I know that my daughter's classroom doesn't have really any extra support. So, I was just kind of curious as far as that goes. Is this something that is going to, like, with all these personnel and things like that, working with these kids, are there enough personnel to work with the rest of the kids as well? Yeah?
So, actually, the...
Inclusive, then?
Approaches that are in this, what I explained, actually would work really well for all the kids at Jox.
Okay.
We are starting with the classrooms where there are focused children because we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by those kids and their classmates. Because there's some pretty good evidence on the ground here that if we do a better job, there'll be more time for all the kids to get all the attention.
Okay.
And there's already some evidence that that's beginning to happen in terms of the numbers of events and stuff like that.
Okay.
But it's really designed, and without addition, other additional staff, it would work for the whole school.
Okay. Thank you.
Diane Dehan, Briar Cliff Drive in Milford. So, I'm speaking now as someone who does not have a first grader, but I am a retired nurse. And I will tell you that you are now giving many more children adverse childhood experiences by having them witness the violence that is going on at Jox. And it isn't just their mental health. Children who experience adverse childhood experiences in later life will have diabetes, hypertension, thyroid disorder, a whole bunch, a whole host of medical conditions because they experienced trauma at a young age. So, now, since we don't have the self-contained classroom that I know used to exist in Milford called the GROW program, where children who had trouble with self-regulation and escalated their behavior without being able to pump the brakes, now they're in the general population. I don't know a better way to put it. So, now, you've exposed all the children to becoming in danger for later on in life with health issues. And I really don't understand how this is cost-effective to have it diffused and spread out over multiple classrooms with these centers. I was sitting in the back going, "My God, how many aides is it going to take to put an aide in the planning center, and an aide in the de-escalation center, and all these little rooms for these people to go to, when before you just had them all in one room?" And as they learned how to self-regulate, as they learned how to pump the brakes on their bad behavior, and how to calm themselves, they could then transition out into the general classroom. But instead, people have, I've heard in my neighborhood, I've heard stories of first graders being choked, stabbed with pencils, hit in the head with lunchboxes, knocked to the ground, and in general, just being hurt. Never have I seen a first grader behave like this, and I have five children. In first grade, I always remember they loved everybody. They were always hugging each other, couldn't wait to come back and see their friends in school. This sounds like a zoo to me, and I don't know how Milford can let this go on. It's nice to have philosophical and educational thinking, but how about we focus on safety? For God's sake, do you want your child to get bitten? I would have flipped out. That is not acceptable. I had two sons nineteen months apart. When my oldest son got tired of his brother, he bit him on the arm. He wasn't even two yet. I went to the doctor, who had seven children himself, and he said, "I'm surprised you didn't see this before, but that's appropriate for that age. It is not appropriate to bite your neighbor when you're in first grade." And yet, this has been going on since August? I just can't imagine how Milford can let this go on. Why are we tolerating this? And take one room, take these children that have so much trouble, put them in that one room and help them, but don't hurt all the other children. And thank you for listening.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd just like to respond to the remark about the GROW program. I just want to, if anybody's interested, going back to the spring and looking at public comment in the spring when we were discussing the ineffectiveness of the GROW program because instead of classroom evacuations, we were having full-school lockdowns last year, which were of grave concern. And one of the issues that we had last year was, when I came in, we were seeing these very new and explosive behaviors, and we revamped and makeshift, put together a program that we called GROW without the proper staffing. And as part of the budget process last year, we added a special educator, we added a social worker, we added, we added back a tutor to make sure that we had the school properly staffed. And we brought in Walker to actually create the systems and structures and programming that would actually help regulate and educate these children. And maybe this is my value system and my philosophy system, but when I hear the words "every child, every chance, every day," I mean every child, every chance, every day, not some. And by excluding children who we are very capable of, that the research shows that we are capable of educating in a least restrictive environment, which when I show you tonight our statistics on our least restrictive numbers here, which are incredibly off the state and what the state target is, I guess we have to ask ourselves as a community, do we really mean all children? And if we do, then we're going to put the practices and the systems and the structures in place and develop the skills in our educators to meet that goal of all. And if not, like, every, almost all. That's what I believe, and I believe that we can do it when we shift and change the practices and the structures and the systems that we have in place. And we have proof. There's proof in the research. There's proof in other schools with children. I think it was Mr. Canty that asked about other children in other districts. These are the same children, and other schools are finding success with these children, and so can we. They are five and six years old, and we can teach them to actually learn to be productive, young members of society. And their best models are their typical peers. And so, I just ask for your patience and your understanding while we move to a new model that will actually help set these kids off for the rest of their lives as empowered young adults that are going to be really, really wonderful, productive members of society. So, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Lindsay Andronico, West Street. First, I just want to say that my first career, I was a lead teacher for mostly in the Head Start school system prior to going on for nursing and eventually my nurse practitioner. So, I do agree with a lot of what my fellow nurse colleague said about what happens at the early ages of children do carry forward for the rest of their life. But I have a few things that I just want to point out and actually ask for clarification because some of the numbers that you used tonight, I feel like I need to verify. It was interesting, though, because, to your point, it was one of the fastest implementations that you have seen over your 25 years. So, I wonder if it's too fast. The children, the teachers, are they prepared for this new structure? Do we throw them into a whirlwind to start the school year? And I feel like that's something that also needs to be evaluated. One of the statistics that was brought up is that you're, in the beginning of the slides, the incidences that have happened since the beginning of this school year, although they were about 100 or so, it was by eight children. Correct?
The August, September, the number of statewide behavioral incidences was 160 by 25 children.
Okay, so related to 25 children. And then, I believe, two tabs down, it was for the most recent research?
Twenty-three incidents in the first couple of weeks here of November.
Okay. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is I would be actually very curious if we looked at those specific children, those 25 children, and then the most recent eight, are they the same children? Are they within that same 25? Because I guess what I'm having a hard time understanding is, we essentially have now restructured our entire elementary school to accommodate 25 children. And I'm all about integration. I'm all understanding of emotional sensitivity. And I think that that is an important piece, and I do understand the de-escalation piece of it because that actually stems to both children as well as medicine. But I guess where I'm having a very difficult understanding of this new structure is, as it affects the children without emotional and behavioral issues, are they now being exposed to things that they would not be otherwise exposed to? And I don't really feel that that is the best environment because they are picking up on acceptable behaviors because we are not allowing the children who have emotional and behavioral issues to have ramifications for their actions. And I feel also, although it's a very, in theory, great plan to have them be brought to other areas of the school, it is also not realistic because we don't have the staffing. And so, I feel like there's a lot of holes in this system. One other thing that I wanted to go over, as far as your numbers, that I thought was interesting, is the bullying rates. Correct? And correct me if I'm wrong, I just jotted it down quickly. It was eight out of 12 bullying episodes specifically were at Jox, correct?
No.
What was the number? The statistics that you had earlier?
The number of reports that have been made in regards to bullying at Jox this year is eight.
Okay, so eight out of 12.
Eight out of the 12.
Okay, so that's what I said. So, eight out of 12. So, the majority of those incidences happened at the elementary level. I think that not only is that pertinent to look at, but I'm also curious if those were children who had emotional behavioral issues already attached to them in their file, or if that's even included in this data. Or, as we all know with statistics, that that data can be manipulated by categorization. Is it categorizations such as not being identified as bullying because they were listed as those with behavioral and emotional issues? So, I think that there, I think across the board, we really need to be understanding of the data. And I see you shaking your head. But I feel that as a whole, we need to be made aware because what's happening is it's affecting all children. Again, I don't want to disclude any children, but it's affecting all children. We need a better system, and I don't think that this was implemented correctly, to be honest with you.
Mike Solo, Miles Slip Road, Concerned Parent. I also had some concerns over the data. Not so much for what was reported, but the fact that the sample size was about two and a half months long. I feel that that's hardly enough data to draw any conclusions. I'd love to see more data to this point last year so that we have a point of comparison. Also, I'd like to know more about what substantiates a minor or a major infraction because at this point, it's subjective in my eyes, or at least in my perception. How are these incidents being reported? As far as bullying reports specifically, I'd also be interested to know how those bullying reports were initially filed because I know that my son personally has had a bullying incident last year, what I consider to be bullying, and would have expected it to be reported as such. This year, same situation. I took it upon myself to report it in an email, and that was the first instance I got a response. So, it leads me to conclude that bullying reports aren't necessarily being reported correctly each and every time by staff members, even though it should be. So, that's all I had to say.
Carla Boudreaux, Windsor Drive. I had a couple of questions after watching the presentation. Did the SAU ever think to send out a questionnaire to all your parents at Jox and Heron Pond and ask them what they think and what's coming home into their house, of what their kids are saying that they saw, of their kids afraid to go to school, of their kids afraid to be in the classroom? Have you thought about those things? Because you gave me adverse childhood experiences, but how many have we created ourselves? Mr. Veer, you said what we're experiencing isn't different from other districts. And from your experience, I will take that as truth. But what we're experiencing is different from what we know. It's gotten worse. We are on this marathon run. However, we decided to let the children leave two hours before the staff. We did not properly train them. We set off on this expedition that sounds good on paper, but we did not implement nearly to the effect that we needed to, to make it safe for the kids. Not just the kids getting hurt, but the kids put in these classrooms. I could tell you in kindergarten, there were kids put in my classroom, that I can remember their names to this day of stay away from them. It's not fair to these kids. They should be getting all those services. They should be getting all those services, should be told how to calm themselves down, teaching that, and then moving them into a classroom so that they feel comfortable of, I'm going to make those friendships, I'm going to be okay in here, I've got all the tools I need. We set them up for disaster, just like we set up all the other kids in the classroom. And my last question, I don't know if anyone's going to answer it, but you have lots of experience. I'm sure you're not here for free. What are we paying for this?
Seriously? There was a question.
Walker Consulting is grant-funded through IDEA.
So Milford School District's not paying for anything?
Walker Consulting is grant-funded through IDEA.
So it is, but I'm just not going to get an answer.
I don't have the exact number for you, Carla.
Jane, do you have the answer?
What I will tell you is it's grant-funded through IDEA, through the special education grant, correct?
Yes. But no one has a figure as to what we're paying?
Right off the top of my head, I don't have that figure, but we can get that for you.
Will that be made public?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
Steve Martin, Constitution Court. Two questions. The first one's on the service teams. It looked like a member of the service team, an adult member of the service team will bring the student to one of the corners. Who is that adult member? Because if it's the teacher, that's not solving a problem. That's still taking a teacher away from the other students in the classroom. I don't know how many other members of the service team are going to be at the school and available all the time. So I'm concerned about still, something has to be done in the classroom, and I'm concerned that the teacher is going to be pulled away and not spending time with all of the students. My second comment, and I don't know how much this is costing, I do want to point out, while it is IDEA grant-funded, we used to have paraprofessionals paid out of the IDEA grant. And I still go back, I still go back, I appreciate Milford trying to get to the end result quickly. I'm concerned, we didn't prepare enough, the staff wasn't trained enough, we let go of the past, we're not at the future yet, the kids are hurting. I think you need more people in the classrooms.
Yes.
All right? If you're going to keep these children in the classroom, you need to give the teacher another adult to help. That's the only way that these kids are going to get, I won't say, I'm trying to word the politically correct word. I don't want to say disciplined, but an adult needs to pull these kids aside, calm them down, so that the teacher remains in the classroom and the kids see a normal educational environment.
I just want to reiterate that the immediate response that I described to you does put in place an additional adult support in the classroom. But remember, too, that I also described that for each of those individual students, those safety plans, we are looking at the amount of time that the student will be spending in the regular education classroom. Because just as many of you are making this point, we need to ensure that those students are supervised and monitored, and that they do, that they are calm and regulated before re-entering into the classroom. So keep in mind just both of those things. For some of the individual students, the amount of time, the alternative schedules will look different than what you're currently seeing. We're trying hard to respond to the fact that we have some urgent and immediate needs, okay? And so in addition to that, also, when those students are and they do re-enter into the classroom, there will be additional support and a second adult. Okay? I just wanted to make sure that I was reiterating that point. So thank you.
Steve Martin, Harvest Drive. Are those aides in place already?
Yes.
They are in every single classroom?
Yes. But Mr. Andronico can state more specifically. Just more specifically.
The classroom's. So we've had, we have six instructional tutors on staff right now at Jock's. The students that we've identified as what we call our focus students do have an extra adult, an instructional tutor in their classroom for almost the entire day, almost the entire day. And those instructional tutors can help in a lot of ways. What I would like to emphasize, though, is I feel that these students require some staff that have a certain level of skills and training. That's our biggest challenge here, is just making sure that we have the adults with the skills and the skill set to work with these challenging kids. And that will take time. So, thanks.
And I did have another question, too. I don't know what we call it now, but we had the Sage School, what's at Bales. It's an off-site school.
Drive.
Project Drive, right. So Project Drive, correct me if I'm wrong, is made for behavioral problem kids. Why do we think it's okay to put fourth, fifth, sixth, eighth, ninth high school kids in an off-site school, or a segregated school, but fully integrate the first graders? Why did we draw that line that the first graders and kindergarten kids are going to be used as guinea pigs?
Do you want to talk to that?
So Mike Hadfield, the Director of Special Services, also the administrator overseeing the Alternative Program. So Project Drive is an alternative program for regular ed and special education students who require additional support. We did have the Project Drive Elementary Program in that building last year, but it was too restrictive for our students. We needed to have our students to be part of a general campus where they have exposure to typical peers, music, you know, gym, P. Those things didn't happen. So although we had success with that program, we wanted to find, create a success doing that. In terms of the elementary school for Jock's, the age level is not conducive to being in that building because we cannot have younger students on the second floor. So we couldn't use that building for that program, even if we wanted to consider that.
Mike, can you just talk a little bit about, you know, how GROW came about last year and why, you know, the issues we were having with GROW and why we went about it, you know, in a new model?
Absolutely. So part of our discussion last year, when we came into some students that had some difficult behavioral challenges, we were trying to really come together as an administrative team to figure out how can we best support these students. So we did what we did is we allocated one of our special education teachers, who was dual-certified in general ed and special education. We decided to make a cluster of students to be able to support the students' learning and provide a more social-emotional learning environment for them where they could really touch base and really focus on their behavior pieces. And we had some nice staff in there, working with the students, making nice connections with students. The pieces that we found struggling were, we had staff that loved the students, was really working hard, but we really didn't have the support of the mental health pieces that Dr. Heisinga talked about, of a licensed mental health counselor, the social worker. We didn't have those trained staff to really support us. The other piece that we really want to make sure is, having those kids isolated in a classroom really didn't provide them with an opportunity to learn from their typical peers, because that's a huge piece of being an inclusive school and classroom.
One last thing, I really want to say, like, I am 100% for helping every kid in this district. Like, I want these kids that are having problems to have the best chance of success as possible. But we need to find a way to do it where we're not hurting the majority of the kids there that can function in a normal school environment. And it's very frustrating as a parent of one of those kids that they're having to be exposed to all of this. I think the district has done a disservice to a majority of the students to help this small minority, and I think that's sad.
Diana Han, Briar Cliff Drive. My question tonight is, who is the mental health counselor for the Jock School? Is there one?
Oh, wait.
Jessica, you said there was one earlier today.
Our mental health counselor?
Mm-hmm.
So Chris Joy is working as the mental health counselor. He is currently working towards his licensure, and...
So that's not a mental health counselor?
What?
That's, what's that? Okay. Okay. To who? Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I thought she was behind me. My other question, what about the supports for the kids that do not meet that level of, you know, the focus kids? Because there are still kids that are causing disruptive behaviors in the classroom that teachers that do not have support in their classroom right now can't handle, and it's causing kids to lose privileges. It's, I mean, it's making kids, like, my daughter doesn't like other kids getting yelled at. She doesn't really get into trouble, but she doesn't like her friends getting yelled at. Because, I mean, I know the future plans, but like, right now?
So right now, the excellent social worker, Tracy, and the, is serving many more kids other than just the focus kids in the school.
Right.
And there is a school counselor who is teaching the social-emotional learning classes for all the kids in the school, so is involved with all the kids. The, and, the mental health counselor is there to serve all the kids in the school. So these, those staff members are not just there to serve the children identified as focus kids, or even just the classes that those kids are in.
But these three kids are still, after two and a half months, causing serious disruption to the classroom, and, you know, there's obviously more needs with these more severe kids. So the staff is being pulled to these other places. And, correct me if I'm wrong, the website says that there's nine, what is it, nine kindergarten teachers? And three paras for kindergarten? Is that right?
There are nine kindergarten teachers.
Yeah, and three extra staff?
Eight first-grade classrooms, eight first-grade teachers, and there are six instructional tutors.
Across first and kindergarten, or?
Yep.
So I should say that there are seven, one position remains open, but there are six on staff right now.
So there's...
One position open.
So how many classes? Seventeen?
Seventeen classes.
And how many supports that are actively there?
Currently on staff, there are six instructional tutors.
Six total?
Six instructional classroom tutors.
Okay, so...
Can I just clarify, too? In addition to the instructional tutors, again, there's six currently staffed, there's one open position. We have 14.45 one-to-one paraprofessionals, we have another 4.29 program associates, there's 25.74 additional adults on top of the general education teachers. There's 50...
Wait, what was that? I'm sorry? The last one?
25.74 paras program associates and instructional associates currently at Jock's.
Twenty-five?
So that work with students, adults that would, so we have 14.45 one-to-ones, we have 4.29 program associates, and then we have six currently staffed positions of instructional tutors and one open position.
I guess any system change that I've ever seen, like PBIS or anything like that, it takes, one, it takes a lot of work to push it out, a lot of training, a lot of buy-in. And I'm just kind of surprised that this, I mean, it's a great idea, but it seems like two or three months to try to push this all into place, really, that seems way too quick to me. And it's like the negatives weren't really either looked at, or they were just kind of pushed to the side and said, we'll just figure it out. Because, again, I'm not concerned about those behavior kids. I'm concerned about the collateral damage that is being caused by this quick, sudden push. Yeah, we're going to train the rest of the school, but I would think that we would go through a year of training before we push this type of program in because it's a huge change to everybody, including the teachers. So I just, I really think that this was not thought outright. So, thank you.
Carla Boudreau, Windsor Drive. Just because you trailed off some, Dr. Heisinga, could you clarify, do we have a licensed mental health counselor at Jock's?
We have a mental health counselor.
Do we have a licensed one, was the question?
We have a mental health counselor who is currently under clinical supervision by the New Hampshire State Board of Mental Health Counselors.
So the answer to my question, though...
Is not licensed.
He's not licensed. How long does it take him to get licensed?
Three years. No. It's two years under clinical supervision, as to by the New Hampshire Board of Mental Health Counselors.
So legally, can we call him a mental health counselor?
He is referred to by his job description.
I understand what we're calling him. I understand what we've been calling him for a long time now. But if we're going to talk about, you truly believe in "every child, every chance, every day," we don't set a plan like this in place without the proper people to execute it. And if the four of you present for tonight's meeting don't do something immediately, then you're on board with a poorly executed plan.
Hi, my name is Mike. I've been sitting here listening.
Mike, your name and your address, please.
I'm not giving my address, so...
No.
It's a requirement.
Milford.
No, your street address, please.
Webster. All right? I've heard plenty of people give their address without numbers, so...
That's fine.
That's where I live. I'm listening. I hear one person that just came up, "We want it now." I hear another person, "You do it now, it's going to be bad for the kids." What the hell do you want? Excuse me. What the heck do you want? You want it now? You want it later? You're all over the place. You want to look at bullies? Look at your own Facebooks. Look at what you're posting online to each other. Look at what you guys are doing. That's bullying.
Mike, could I ask you?
No, I'm finishing. That is bullying. Go ahead, boo. But you want, you want this to be fixed?
Mike, really, you have to address the chair.
Work with your kids.
You can't, you can't address the crowd.
Work with the kids at home. Work with your children. Teach them the right ways to do things. That's what we've got to do as parents, not rely on the school to do everything, to come up with it. This is great planning coming in. I'm not saying it's perfect, but it's something. What I'm seeing here is it started in June, right? You got a call in June? That is planning going on. That is something. That is results. It may be perfect, it may not, but we've got to work and see what goes on here and try it out. I'm liking a plan coming in. I'm seeing everywhere, no one's doing anything. I'm seeing the school board doing something. Whether it's perfect or not, that's not up to me to decide or one other person here. But I'm seeing something. And I am very grateful that there is something going on here, that there is a process going on, that there is an attempt at it, at least. You are listening to what parents have to say, and that's great. There may be suggestions. I think parents should be able to give suggestions if they feel as well. Are you open to getting suggestions from parents?
I think so.
Okay. So what is the proper form if I have a suggestion and I want to send it to you?
You can always email.
And I'll get a response, correct?
You'll get an acknowledgement. I don't know what that would...
But it will be acknowledged.
Sure.
And if that's not enough, I am able to meet with you guys, right?
Well, you're here now.
Exactly.
So we also...
So, the superintendent's office, the superintendent's office is also welcome, you know, suggestions?
Yeah, absolutely. I've spoken with Mr. Marco a couple times. It's been awesome. They're open for hearing what my concerns are. Absolutely. But this whole, "We want it now, we're doing it too quick," that's gotta be addressed. That's, what's too quick? What's not quick enough? Is it now? Is it later? We're all over the place here. That's what I'm hearing from people in this hall. My opinion. Sorry it's not popular.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
If I could just say one thing, you know, I don't, I don't disagree that, you know, there's definitely some significant needs and immediate action needs to be taken. And that is why we have taken immediate action to put safety plans in place, to create alternative schedules, to create alternative recess, to put those spaces in place so that we can create a hybrid model as we transition and, and move towards a school-wide model. You know, if, if we can say, you know, just put those kids in a room, separate them out until they're ready to come out and, and play with everyone else. Because that's what I'm hearing. We should just put them in bales. Let's put them in, put them, put them in another room. Put, let's, let's not include them. But the, what I'm trying to find is, is a medium here, because these are little children, five and six years old, that are teachable. And we are putting things immediately, we are doing something immediately right now to address their needs with alternate schedules and alternate recesses and alternate lunches and putting additional supports in classrooms. Those things are all being done. They weren't done quickly enough. They are being done now. And I, I believe that we are going to continue to see a decline in the amount of behaviors and disruptive incidences, as we have already begun to see in the data. Last year, we had a sub-separate program. And last year, the complaint from parents throughout the spring was that program wasn't working. Those kids were separated last year, and we had full school lockdowns, that we were getting complaint after complaint after complaint that there was a safety issue. And so we moved to a different model. And was it a perfect rollout? Maybe not. But we are working really, really diligently, and we've put a lot of supports in place that weren't in place last year. And I believe that those children are gonna be the better for it with just a little bit of patience and a little bit of persistence and a little bit of resilience on the part of the adults. They need that. Not just the five or six or eight focus kids, but all the kids. Thank you.
Okay, if I could ask the three of you, if you could keep it brief, I'd like to close public comment after this.
Lindsay and Veronica, West Street. Quick question, how many total students do we have enrolled at JACs?
Three hundred and sixty-five.
Three sixty-five? Okay, and so we've, we've restructured this for the, the twenty-five focus kids. So I just find that- Eight for the last for November, but we discussed earlier that it was twenty-five. So, and, and I understand, so the ages between four and five were most developed. And that's actually a pre-K typically going into kindergarten. And that's when we have, as, as tiny human beings, established how we respond to almost all stimuli around us. And I think what maybe needs to be kind of a combination is, is as these children are now thrown into a public school environment, they don't have the coping skills, so potentially still keeping some sort of safe space for them to learn those coping skills that they've never had to develop before is not a bad idea. And eventually, it's not a, I think that we should not use the word segregation as, as previously was, you know, thrown around before. I don't think that's appropriate. I think that we need to get those kids to the point where they feel safe and are able to respond appropriately to those around them. And until they're able to do so, fully functioning, I, I think that we're also putting other children at risk. And I do agree to your point that there were holes in the system about a year or so. And it sounds that a lot of those issues were identified. But I don't feel, as this has talked about the implementation, I don't actually feel that this is working for the majority of our students. And I think that it just needs to be reanalyzed, and I would very much like to see the current data so we can compare things as a, as a concerned community. And I think from there, hopefully, the board would be open to revisiting this when we have the, the next meeting, and hopefully that we could get some good discussion going.
If I could just reiterate, this restructure didn't happen for twenty-five kids. Trauma-sensitive schooling and these systems and structures, calming centers and planning centers inside the classroom, protocols and processes for students who get dysregulated outside of the classroom, proper social and emotional supports, mental health workers in schools, all of those things are great things for all kids. Every child in the school, because there may be a day where a regular student who you've never, ever seen an incident from becomes dysregulated, they had an event that morning, and they come into school, and those practices are in place, and they've been developing the coping skills, and they know what to do, or there's a mechanism in place for them to go to. That wouldn't be the case if we simply had a place for those students to go. And so I just wanna reiterate, these practices are research-based practices that are good for all kids, because they're, we all should be so lucky that our children go through life not having had a, a really terrible thing happen to them. And if the school is structured and the organization is structured to service them in those dire times, we are all the better for it. Our community is all the better for it. And let me tell you, these children are not going to go away. The numbers are going to grow. It is the society that we live in, and we need to restructure the way that we work if we are going to serve as all children. We just do.
And I'm not disputing that all kids can have a one-off day, and they should have a safe space. They should have a counselor that they can be able to talk to. They should have an environment where they can voice those concerns. But you're talking truly about a one-off. And I think that as we have restructured this around a, a smaller portion of children, it just needs to be looked at. But to your point, there is a good foundation there. I'm not disputing that. A lot of these skills, the teachers have already implemented, and, and I think that there is a lot of good to that. However, I think, as we've all said, there's just a lot of behavioral issues as this has been developed. So it just needs to be, continue to be looked at.
Agreed.
Diane Dehan, thirty-seven Briar Cliff Drive. I just wanna state what I stated before, which was not what the superintendent said I said. My point was to prevent escalation, that teach children how to pump the brakes on their behavior, and that they, I really believe that they should have a self-contained room to do this in so that other children are not injured. I am not in any way promoting segregation. I am promoting safety and education. And that is what I'm promoting. So you are wrong.
Hi, Tracy Evangelista, Cortlandt Road. I had no intention of speaking tonight, 'cause actually, this actually terrifies me, being up in front of so many people. But I wanna be brief. My child is in one of these classrooms with one of these focus students, and I've seen her decline over the, over the past couple of months, just being terrified of going to school. She's one who loves learning, loves being with her peers in her classroom, loves her teacher, but she shouldn't be exposed to this type of violence. My kids don't have tablets, my kids aren't allowed TV time, they don't get exposed to this stuff. And seeing a child in her classroom throw chairs, threaten the teacher, throw books at student, at fellow classmates, and generally have to be restrained, is not something that she should have to witness in the classroom or on any of her other peers. I know some of the other kids in her classroom as well are scared to go to school, and that's not right. And I just, I think I'm expressing the frustrations of a lot of parents over the fact that there's been a very big lack of communication as well. I didn't realize the scope of this until I got onto some of the groups on Facebook. I don't post on Facebook, I'm there only for information purposes. But we're, we're frustrated, and something should be done, because this was all implemented. I think it was implemented too quickly. We didn't have any thought behind it as to what was going to be the effect to all the other kids. I want the best for all of the kids in the school, and if we have these, these professionals in place now, the social workers, the behavioral workers, perhaps it's worth considering pulling some of the others out of the mainstream classroom to work with them individually in these classrooms and then reintroduce them, because they're being too violent in the classroom. And that's all I wanted to say.
I'm gonna close public comment at this time, but thank you for your input.
Are we done? 'Cause I have a public comment.
We're, we're closing public comment at this time.
I don't think you are.
Yes, we are.
Mike actually didn't even give his full name, so you're gonna hear from me. I wanna remind you, oh, Jamie Morgan, one eighty-eight, Ennann Drive, but you probably know that. November fifth, and I'm here again, uh, because what I just heard as I was watching was lies from all of you. But what I'm gonna address right this second is an email Kevin I sent to all of you, since you were standing in as the board. I'll direct my question to you. Tuesday, November fifth, to the Milford School Board and Superintendent Jessica, Tuesday, November, November fifth, that's, what is that? A long time ago from now. During the last Milford School Board meeting on October twenty-first, Carla Boudreau mentioned that she would like to see a report on our district's reporting of physical assaults, altercations, incidents at all of our schools. As a parent with two children in the district, I am formally requesting this topic be included as an agenda item on the Milford School Board meeting on November eighteenth. That wouldn't be the first time you got an email like that, 'cause you got one from Carla a week earlier. I've heard a lot of upsetting news about what is happening at schools in our district, and I think it would be wise to make this discussion a priority. Per RSA one ninety-three F-six, each school district shall annually report substantiated incidents of bullying or cyberbullying to the DOE. It would be very useful to see what the official report was last year compared to we are now. Can, did any of you guys answer me? November fifth, and I know I'm not the first one. You just said, when I was home, someone came up, I think it was Mike, no last name Mike with no address, said, "What's the process?" You, are we gonna email you? Kevin, you said yes. What is the process, Kevin? Because on November fifth, I am not the first person to email the board. So if I emailed, what is the process then? Can you tell me? Can you help me understand what the process is?
You can email, you can ask. It doesn't automatically-
Ah, no!
It does not automatically get put on the agenda. That's all I'm gonna say.
So multiple people ask?
Public comment is now closed. This is not even on the topic we were discussing. So you're out of order. Public comment is-
I'm out of order?
You're out of order.
How am I out of order? This is still public comment.
We're gonna move on now to the budget presentation.
Okay, I just want you all to know, everybody knows you're liars.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wood?
Yes, if I may, I'd just like to put a, point out that, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, the statistics and report of bullying reports and incidents were included in the superintendent's report this meeting, November eighteenth. And this presentation that we spent the last two hours on is responsive to the other one. So it's not like the board did not respond. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make a comment on the discussion that we were just having before we move on. As I was listening to everyone's comments, as well as the presentation, I, I had some questions that I think do warrant further investigation and further attention. You mentioned examples of behavioral incidents that are tracked, and you gave numbers and statistics. It would be, I think, helpful for the school board at least to have an idea of what types of examples of behavioral incidents would be tracked, as well as you talked about cause for evacuation. What would, you know, make that happen? Under what circumstances would we need to evacuate? And the questions concerning the grant funding that we're using for this specific program that we chose, I had a wonder, could the money be used for any type of trauma training, or was it specific to this program? We're not Boston, we're Milford, New Hampshire. And I think that what I've heard overwhelmingly from the residents is that we're not against inclusion, but we need to balance it with the needs of the three hundred and forty-nine or however many students aren't considered the focus students. It also sounds like at this point, there are eight true focus students. And I just wonder, do the parents of those eight focus students really want full inclusion to the extent where, as the nurse practitioner in the room, who is a former educator brought up, it would be like taking a baby born in the NICU who isn't quite strong enough yet to go out to the general population? You're not only putting the baby at risk, but you're putting other people at risk. And I wonder, would they not benefit more so from a balanced program where, like, half of the day, the child is taught the coping skills they need? I love the, the four elements of your program for non-fully escalated incidents, but I think that, or, or for the general population, I think it's a great program to focus on and to treat more tolerance and more coping mechanisms. We all have trauma every day. That's the world we live in. But I'm in agreement that completely mainstreaming these kids that aren't ready to deal with that yet, and then potentially taking children that have been sheltered and exposing them to something that is so much more traumatic and horrifying on a massive full district level. You mentioned eight focus students with six instructional tutors. I also have a wonder, are these eight focus students in eight separate classrooms? Are they sprinkled in a couple of classrooms where some children are getting, like, constant messages? You know, we read about, like, what playing, um, video games, violent video games does. Well, what does watching violence in the classroom when you're five or six years old? You're talking about these poor five or six-year-old children that need the extra attention, but I think they need it in a more structured environment. And then we introduce them gradually into the mainstream and balance it. I'm afraid that people are gonna start taking their children out of the district. I'm afraid that, you know, we talk about constraints for both funding and, and teachers in the classroom and aides in the classroom, as well as space, but now we're allocating all this additional space to eight focus children. It's just a lot to take in, and I, I don't think that we can solve it in one meeting. I think that we need to take a step back and look at how we're doing this. I, I don't think that necessarily the way it's being handled right now is in the best interest of the majority.
If I could just clarify, committee member, Telepa, we're not allocating those spaces to just eight children. Those spaces are accessible to all children in the school and can be used by all children in the school. That's one thing. The other thing is that the hybrid model that you just spoke of, the partial inclusion, inclusion as much as possible, is exactly the model that we are moving to. It was the model that I had hoped to see from the very beginning. It simply didn't get launched that way. Students were supposed to get a good portion of their day, getting the mental health counseling needs that they were supposed to get. They were meant to be getting some direct and explicit instruction. In fact, my directive was, is that if they cannot function appropriately, they cannot access their learning. And so it, it didn't necessarily happen that way. Those structures are now being put in place, and that's, was part of the alternative schedules, alternative lunches, alternative recesses. Everything that you just said is exactly what we are moving to now.
Right, and, and an alternative lunch when needed, or an alternative recess when needed, but I'm not talking about putting Band-Aids on that problem. I'm talking about actually restructuring the program where at least half of their day is spent getting intensive therapy that they need. We brought all these people on staff, special ed, social worker-
Yes.
-mental health specialist, soon-to-be certified mental health. And I'm a little unclear as to why we didn't just hire a certified, licensed, mental health provider. provider. I mean, these are all big questions. I just had so many wonders as I was listening, and I don't expect all the answers, but I do think another presentation, maybe with more of that information, is warranted, information on statistics last year for bullying. You know, as I said, what constitutes escalation? What constitutes, you know, are these kids all commingled in three or four classes? Or just more concrete data so we, as parents and board members and residents, can sort of, it has to be a joint solution. And it's great that you've taken strides to address it. I just hope that we're moving forward more and more proactive instead of reactive.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we can move on to the budget presentation now.
So we're moving. High levels. I'm going to try to go through this quickly. This is just supposed to be a high-level introduction to the budget proposal for the next school year. It's hard to believe that we're already talking about next school year. We've, I feel like we've just started the first one. But I just want to say that, you know, the district leadership team, I just want to thank all the principals, all the directors, business administrators, HR, technology, special education, just for the diligent work that we've been undertaking since the summertime, led by Jane Fortson. She's just done an amazing job, really kind of structuring this process for us in collaboration with myself and with Ms. Meeshod. So I just want to thank my team. They did a great job. The Milford School District vision that we developed collaboratively as a community last year says that we're going to be an inspiring community where deep learning and strong relationships empower all students to become designers of their own story. And our mission has really, we've been working diligently in development of the strategic plan around these ideas and ensuring that every graduate is fully prepared to pursue individual higher learning opportunities and in-demand careers, enabling them to become positive role models, responsive citizens, and innovative contributors to a robust, dynamic economy. I really love that addition to the vision. And another important aspect of our mission is that we're going to have diverse perspectives that find common ground for the greater good through ongoing engagement. Meaningful opportunities for student voice and choice, and caring, supportive, and collaborative relationships in and across communities, and then fostering innovation to ensure continuous improvement and excellence in our school, district, and community. And this is the mission, the things that we're going to do to achieve the long-term vision of the district. And so our strategy over the last year and a half now has really been focusing on strengthening our core curriculum and instruction, increasing time and supports for students, teachers, and families, investing in our staff through powerful, ongoing professional development, providing more access, opportunity, and innovation at every level, focusing on the fundamentals of our elementary education to build a strong foundation for our middle and high school students, and then expanding opportunities for choice and innovation throughout the district, increasing access to technology, music, arts, and foreign language. So those are the things that I hope to see, or I hope that you see in the budget proposal this year, that we're really aligned to that particular strategy and really working towards the district goals, which are around student success and improving our outcomes for all students, our goal, which is culture, policy and communications, and goal four is community engagement. So all of this is towards graduating every child from Milford with the core competencies that we've outlined in our Portrait of a Graduate, which is critical thinkers and problem solvers, creators and innovators, flexible, adaptive, and resilient learners, personably responsible individuals, globally aware citizens, and effective communicators. So everything that we're doing, all of the work, all of the change, all of the restructure really has to do with helping all of our kids graduate with those six competencies. And so for the 2021 proposed budget, we're proposing $43,597,806, which is a 1.7% increase or $729,448 over the current fiscal year FY '20. So that's the new proposed budget. And I'll talk a little bit about the highlights of what is under those. The budget summary here that you'll see, I know that the budget committee members who have already gotten the budget and the school board and members of the public will see tomorrow, in the back of the budget document is the outline of where those changes and appropriations come and what the total increase is. You can see it's $729,448. That does take into account the retirement of the Heron Pond Bond. So that is the total increase. And I'll talk a little bit about, you know, what are the drivers of those particular increases in just a moment. But we are also going to give you in that report an appropriation, sort of history, over what has happened over the last few years since FY '15. You can see the different percent increases and percent decreases over those periods of time. The major increase that you see there at 12.1%, I believe that was the $3 million bond. That is why that number is so high. And that was to do some major facilities and infrastructure upgrades that we just brought to completion this past school year. I want to thank Bill Cooper and his department for the great work that they've done. But you can see mainly, though, that when there's been increases, they've ranged anywhere from 2.9, about 3%. Last year, we had a 2.02% increase. And I just want to point out that this was after all of the warrant articles were added to last year's total. If you remember, last year's total looked like, what was it, like, 0.4%? That was one part of the warrant. And then the new teacher's contract that got rolled into that, correct, Jane, as well as the new custodial contract and the $200,000 contingency.
Yes, all three.
All three of those are rolled into that, and that's why that's a 2.02% increase. This year, our increase is at 1.7%. That is without the current Mesa contract negotiations and other warrant articles that we also will be putting forward. And we'll talk more about that this Saturday during the main budget presentation. I'm going to give it over to Jane to talk a little bit about the tax impact analysis. She'll explain it a little bit more than I, but I'm sure weighing on many members of the community, considering that there was just a new valuation across the community of Milford. People are wondering what this impact will be on the taxes.
If you take a look at the first column of numbers, that's the actual 1920 budget impact.
Sorry.
It's okay. And you'll see the actual tax rate of 19.12, which was the local tax and the school education tax that is relative to the local school district. In trying to estimate going out to 2021, which is, you know, going out more than a year at this point, the top amount in second column is our proposed budget with $13,56,608 offsetting with an additional $31,2806 for the local education tax. If you take a look at your numbers, you're almost coming dead even with where we would be this current year. Differences being the budgeted amount has gone up about $750,000. The revenues predicted for next year have gone up significantly, and that is due to the increased educational aid that we'll be getting. The bottom line, however, comes to be almost dead even because we had a $750,000, approximately $770,000 of excess fund balance that were applied against your taxes. So combining that excess fund balance with the increase in the budget, that $1.5 million that you had heard was being an increase coming from the one-time allocations of the governor's budget that he signed, is pretty much bringing the amounts even when we get to that point. Adding to that is we've added a line, and when the budget's released, you'll see a warrant article for the Mesa contracts. We're in hopes of reaching a contract. Those amounts would be included in the budgeted amount as far as taxes go next year. I've also recreated the warrant article regarding the creation of a capital reserve. I brought it up last year and has stated, I think, on the last board meetings, I'm reintroducing that as well as an expendable trust for special ed. And those two to bring forth, and it's almost as though you have a backup with those, and I'm doing those with the support of our external auditors who were in hopes that would be passed last year and are again hoping to pass those this year. We have additionally put the contingency from fund balance on there. I will be proposing an alternative to that as well for the board to consider. I have not put that forth at this time. We're still kind of in the early phases of that. And the other warrant article is to establish a capital improvement warrant article, which would be $300,000 for boiler repair here at the high school and $200,000 to work on the storage barn that has been on many board agendas. That's coming down to a total property tax impact of about 19.70, could range to 19.81 at this point. Two of the items are being raised from fund balance. I think we could hit one. I don't know if we would have enough fund balance to fund both of those. So as we go through the discussions with the board, just trying to be very proactive in letting them know what we may be looking at. So that's where we are at this point.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to give us a sense of, and the community, a sense of what the average cost per pupil in Milford is comparatively to the rest of sort of this area of New Hampshire. As you can see, I think we fall sixth from the top in terms of per pupil costs. And what we spend is about $15,994 per student here in Milford. This is a really interesting sort of look at professional staffing year over year. As you can see, you know, there's been a lot of discussions about, you know, we've taken away from special education students and we're not meeting their needs. As you can see here, we've actually increased the number of special educators across the district over the last two years. Last year, we had 25. This year, we have 29. We are looking to maintain those numbers to 29 this next year as well. Counselors and social workers, we've increased the number of mental health supports in the district by four over the last year. We want to continue those numbers, and those have been sort of the bigger significant increases that we've seen. We also are looking to increase the number of professional staff for next year by one. One thing that I think is going to have to be another consideration as we look is our nursing staff. We, right now, don't have any changes proposed for that, but that will be a discussion, I'm sure, as we go through this budget cycle and season with the number of, you know, more significant needs that we're seeing of kids and just the overall visits. I'm asking for data on that as we speak. The other thing that we may have to take into consideration that will be a discussion amongst the budget committee and board is simply the increase in the number of elementary students that we're seeing. This year, we were not anticipating the number of kindergarten students that we have. We also didn't anticipate the number of first graders. And so we were able to add those teachers, but there's no telling what those numbers are going to be next year, which continues to put a real space strain on Jock's Memorial School. But overall, you can see since 2016-17, we've seen a pretty significant increase in the number of professional staff of 14. So that number has only gone up. Also, special education support staff, there's been a lot of discussion about that. As you can see, since 2017-18, the number of full-time one-to-one aides has actually increased. Part-time aides, we've decreased just by a couple. Program associates, we've increased part-time program associates, but we have seen a decrease in the full-time program associates. And many of those resources have been allocated to professional staff, such as those mental health workers, the increase in teachers that we've seen to make sure that we're maintaining a decent class size, particularly at the elementary school. So we have reduced those program associates, not taking away services from kids, but shifting those services to other areas of need. The average teacher salary, Milford is third amongst these school districts, third to only Sauhegan and Amherst. So our teachers are well up there as amongst the highest-paid teachers in the area. Total reductions proposed for FY '21, we are, because of the anticipated reduction in students of about 73 is what is anticipated next year at the high school. I don't believe it's going to be that high, but the enrollment projections are anticipating around 73 less students at the high school. This is that wave of students that have come through with smaller class sizes that we're seeing actually hit the high school now. So we're proposing the reduction of one full-time high school teacher and the reduction of one full-time speech-language associate district-wide. And I just, I want to point out, I was doing the math earlier, and I don't think I have it right in front of me, but I think right now about 19.5% of students identified have a speech-language disability. I'm pretty sure that's what's in the pie chart. It's about 19.5%. And right now, currently in our staffing for speech-language supports, we have six-and-a-half certified speech-language pathologists and a speech associate. Six-and-a-half speech-language associates for the number of students that we have is about a 1 to 12 caseload for students with those disabilities. I'm sure that there are other disabilities that cross over, but six-and-a-half is well staffing this district for the number of students who need those services. Correct? Okay.
Do I leave the data as a primary disability?
Yes.
Just a primary.
Yes, that is primary disability data, 19.5%. So those are the only reductions that we're proposing in terms of staffing for this budget cycle. The key drivers for the budget this year, of course, are obligatory cost, wages, and benefits. They make up about 80 to 82% of the entire budget. We're a people organization, and that's the majority of what is going to drive your budget increases. Another factor is enrollment data. So as we see increases in certain grades and decreases in certain grades, we're going to have to make shifts of staffing depending on the enrollment data. So that's a second driver of the budgetary decisions. Another factor are revenues and cost savings and expenditures. And as Jane talked about, is that we are going to see sort of an influx of some additional funding next year, which is great. But we also have to be mindful of, you know, what are some ways to generate revenues as a district moving forward in the future? What are some things that may sunset in the future that are going to allow for money to be freed up and reinvested into the district? And what are some other areas that we can find some cost savings? The fourth factor is facilities, maintenance and costs. And one of the things that we've engaged in in this district as a routine practice is deferred maintenance. We've deferred a lot of maintenance on our infrastructure and our facilities, and we've really poured those resources into staffing. And now we're starting to see some of our facilities and infrastructures needing some significant work, as well as our athletic fields. And so we really have to be mindful of moving away from that deferred maintenance practice and really investing in our infrastructure and facilities because if kids don't have modern learning spaces, we can't provide the 21st century, modern learning opportunities that we want for the kids. The next factor is out-of-district costs, and we are going to see some increases in out-of-district. We are already seeing some new kiddos that we're welcoming to Milford. And so those out-of-district costs do drive the budget numbers, and they will this year slightly. And then the sixth factor, and really what has driven a lot of the And then, the sixth factor, and really what has driven a lot of the decisions, is our strategic plan and ensuring that we're meeting the goals that we have set out for us over the next five years. So, some proposed budget highlights for you. Jacques Memorial School. We're looking to address some spacing issues that we have there by moving the preschool program to Heron Pond. We also are going to be proposing additional early wellness and expanding physical education by increasing staff, physical education and health staff there from part-time to full-time. Looking to continue to strengthen early literacy practices and learning outcomes by implementing new English language arts resources, just continuing the work that's already underway at Jacques. And I have to say, we're already seeing some really wonderful progress coming from our monitoring data, particularly in kindergarten. And I keep telling people, as you see kids coming up stronger and stronger and stronger throughout the grades from having a really well-developed literacy foundation, it's going to only strengthen the overall outcomes of the district. And over the course of the next couple of days, Wednesday night, I'll be sharing some of the district data, as well as on Saturday morning. I won't be doing it tonight. Just continuing to improve curriculum and instruction, providing specialized general next-gen science exemplar training and developing, continue to develop that multi-tiered system of social and emotional learning and wellness, much of which we discussed tonight. Just to give you a sense of the classroom sizes, right now, our average integrated preschool is about 15 students per class. The average general ed class this year is 16, and the average general ed class right now is anywhere between 19 and 20. FY '21 is still to be determined. We'll be working on those numbers. We're not quite sure exactly where we're going to land in terms of class sizes, but we anticipate them to be around the same. Heron Pond Elementary School, some of the budgetary highlights. We're looking to expand music programming by bringing the music program back to the school day for 5th grade by increasing our part-time music teacher to full-time music. And one of the reasons for that is we're really seeing a decline in our high school music program and just overall music participation. So, we're really looking to strengthen that foundational music at the elementary school, hopefully even opening up the after-school program to even earlier grades. And then, looking to sort of build that foundation all the way up through the high school. Another thing that we hope to address is the high school schedule that seems to be inhibiting students from being able to take part in band, as well as other programs or courses at the high school, and sort of removing some of those conflicts so that students can really explore the arts, explore music, explore other areas, as well as not have to choose so much between different things. So, that's another thing that we're looking to do. Continue to expand wellness and physical education. That means moving the 1.5, or I think it's .45, teacher, physical education and wellness teacher at Heron Pond to full-time. And so, increasing more physical education and wellness at Heron Pond, which will also address social and emotional learning. Continuing to focus on literacy instruction and learning outcomes and continue to expand inclusionary practices for students using special education resources. Here are the projected class sizes for Heron Pond for next year. Looking at the same total number of classrooms of 31, with average class sizes ranging anywhere from 19.1 to 22.7. So, right, pretty much in line with what we have this year. Milford Middle School, continue to strengthen foreign language programming. As I said earlier tonight in my report, this is the first year that students are going to be able to take foreign language for high school credit at Milford Middle School. This year, we also added back Spanish to grade 6 to, again, really meet our goal of developing globally-aware learners as part of our portrait of a graduate. And we want to strengthen our foreign language numbers. We've seen a significant decline in the participation in foreign language at Milford High School, and we want to really build a robust middle school foreign language program. My hope is eventually to see foreign language introduced at the elementary schools so that, you know, when students get up to the high school, they even have the ability for immersion pathways. So hopefully, that will be a reality someday in Milford. The next thing is also expanding our new math programming into grades 7 and 8. This year, we piloted a new math program out of Open Up, and from what I understand, it's going extremely well. The kids love it. The teachers have really seen tremendous growth in the kids, and we're looking to expand that math program into grades 7 and 8. And last but not least, continuing to expand inclusionary practices for students using special education resources and moving co-teaching into the middle school and using universal design for learning as sort of the launching point for that. Here are the middle school class averages in the general education class this year, ranging anywhere from 21.5 to 22.4. Of course, there are outlier classes that are higher than that. I think we, when I spoke to Tony today, I think it was about 5.5% of all of the classes at the middle school are over 25. So, I think that's about 19 classes, somewhere around there. There's 365 classes. I'm just trying to remember the numbers that you sent me today. Yeah, so a lot of numbers, but just a small percentage of the classes there are over 25. We've always had class sizes over 25 in Milford. We have less class, I don't think we have a class size over 25 at the elementary schools this year. We had over 27-sized last year. So we have reduced those class sizes at the elementary school. And, you know, we continue to look at ways to ensure smaller class sizes at the middle school as well. Next year, we're anticipating those same numbers, anywhere between 21 and 1/4 to 22 in the general education setting. Milford High School, some key things that we're looking to do, update furniture for expanded 21st century learning and hands-on experiences, expanding technology for more student access, and to support the orderly school day operation. Update applied technology center equipment to meet course requirements, provide industry certifications, and maintain safety. One of the things that I know is really exciting is that the ATC program is looking into planning for a health sciences pathway moving into next year, which is really exciting. Health sciences and the health industry is one of the leading economic opportunities for graduates when they leave high school and/or college. And so, providing students a leg up in those areas is significant and a great opportunity. We're going to continue to expand our externship pathways and look for different types of opportunities and pathways for industry certifications and opportunities for college credits for students. And then, making staffing decisions that are informed by enrollment numbers. And we'll be doing a detailed analysis of that as we move forward in the budget cycle in looking at those projections. This is the at-current class size average for general education at Milford High School is about 19.2, and the average career and technical education class size is 14.5. And so, we don't have the anticipated class sizes yet because students have to pick their courses, and they generally do that in January and February. Special education highlight is to recruit .5 full-time equivalent preschool teacher. Again, to, we have quite a waiting list for our preschool program, and we want to continue to expand opportunities for our typical peers to enter our preschool program. And so, increasing that preschool teacher will allow us to include more students. Continuing to expand the inclusionary model and programming and improve technology, especially assistive technologies for students, to help them access the curriculum even more. And I just want to point this out. I've shared this data before, but I want to point out, this is a significant data point as to why we continue to talk about inclusion and we continue to talk about these types of practices. In Milford at this time, students in special education spent, who spend less than 40% of their day in regular classes. In Milford, 17.1% of students in special education spend less than 40% of their day in a general education class. That means that we're not giving access. We're not providing opportunity to students at twice the rate of the state of New Hampshire. And the state of New Hampshire hasn't even met their state target yet. Their state target for inclusion is that only 7.97% of students spend less than 40% of their day. So we have a ways to go, and we're trying to put those systems and structures and supports in place because the research says that students who have access to the general education setting do better, period. Okay? I just want to repeat that. Special education students who have access to the general education setting do better, period. The research is clear, and the latest study that's out is clear. And what we want to do is, we want to move that number from 17.13%, closer to the state target of 7.97%. And that's the hard work that's happening right now here in Milford, and I'm really proud of the teachers and the hard work that they're doing. They're doing really awesome work for kids. So, as I said, why is this important? Because we're giving them greater access to the general education curriculum. We're helping teachers and providing professional development and providing specially-designed instruction to students, as well increased interaction between teachers, well, between students and their typical peers. And then, higher levels, all of this results in higher levels of student achievement, all of it. Curriculum instruction and professional learning. Our goal is to continue to expand literacy training and instructional resources. This year, we rolled out a new literacy program. It's really been neat to see some of the lab portions of the program. It's really hands-on, it's play-oriented. I got some pictures from Jacques today. It's been really awesome to see what kids are doing in those classes. And we'll be expanding the Open Up program to grades 4 and 5. And as, the exciting thing is, is that the routines and the structures that the reading program puts in place, the higher level of rigor and the text complexity that kids are getting access to as wee little as kindergarten, those same routines and structures will follow them into grade 1, and into grade 2, and into grade 3, and into grade 4, and into grade 5. And that continued consistency and predictability and routines and access to high levels of text complexity is going to create not only better learning outcomes for kids, but stronger learners who really are empowered to become designers of their own story. So we're really excited about what we're seeing already in grades in kindergarten and grade 1. It's really, really, really neat what I've seen down at Jacques. And I know that the teachers, I haven't had as much time to go to see the 2nd and 3rd grade teachers, but I've heard wonderful things coming from Heron Pond. I know it's hard work, it's a first-year implementation, but there's some really, really neat pockets of cool stuff that are happening. And I know that's only going to expand as we get better, better, and better and better at teaching and learning literacy. The next thing we'll continue to focus on is implementing the next-generation science standards. Again, continuing to work on social, emotional, behavioral support and professional development that we discussed tonight, and providing social and emotional learning and wellness curriculum resources. That's another kind of focus area for the Department of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Learning. In technology, again, replacing Chromebooks that are no longer supported by Google is going to be another focus. Enhancing the district registration processes and information systems. We've done a lot of things by paper here in Milford for a really long time, and this year, we were able to move to a technology applicant tracking system for human resources. And we're hoping to move to more of a technology platform that is going to help with district registration and processes. And so, all those, those blackboard calls that you get from me in the summer, "Come, register your child, fill out all your paperwork," all of that will be mainstreamed online, which will be great for parents and also really helpful to our nurses who won't have to spend like 2 or 3 14-hour days filling out paperwork and then having to do the data input. So we're pretty excited about moving to an enhanced information system. Building and grounds, this is going to be a major focus of this budget discussion, making the scheduled repairs to Milford High School track. There's the replacement of the Heron Pond Elementary School roof, replacement of Heron Pond Elementary School playgrounds, and addressing truck replacement. But that's not all. We have dying boilers across the district, and they need to be replaced. We have other infrastructure needs. We need to do a district feasibility study on our buildings. We need to look at Milford High School, which is the flagship school of our district. We need to look at our athletic facilities and think towards the future and think about making really opportunities, not only for revenue, but just opportunities on how to continue to build Milford as a destination community. So, the big discussion here is, where do we want some of these bigger items to sit? Whether it's in the operational budget that we're taking the, you know, and reinvesting monies that come free, or those other areas, what will then go into the warrant articles? So I know that that will be a discussion that we'll have as a, as a community. And then, district-wide, we're looking at a 3.9% increase in dental health, dental insurance rates. Our health rates came in at .3%, and we are looking to increase our legal funding line. And you'll see this in the budget book, that we, we've always lately gone over legal fees year by year, but this year was a significant increase. And we are looking to mitigate those increases. And those are the high-level budget highlights. As I said, over the next few days, I'll be going into more detail with data behind the book, answering questions of the budget and the school committee. And most of my team will be taking those questions for their departments, and they'll be happy to answer any questions that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heisinger, for that quick overview. There's always a lot to it every year, and we have a fairly thick book here to go through. We have our session coming up on Saturday. We have another meeting on Monday, next Monday, to focus on this budget, you know, as we move forward. Are there any initial comments? I don't think we should get too much into the weeds on, on the budget at this point just because there's so much there and we could spend a lot of time, but if many of the board members have any initial. Mr. Wood?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move on now to policy proposals. We have five, five policy proposals that went through the policy committee and are now each up for their first reading. So the first one is on board member ethics. It's proposed code 2111. This is actually a new policy, did not exist before. And so, we have that in your packet. Are there any board member comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wood?
I move policy 2111, second reading.
Policy 2111 is moved to second reading by Mr. Wood. Is there a second? I will second it. Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor of moving to this, policy 2111 to the second reading, say aye.
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 I'm an aye, that's four ayes. Motion passes 4 to 0. All right, policy 2113, board member orientation. Again, a new, new policy that's been through the policy committee.
Moved to second reading.
Moved to second reading by Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Talapa. Any board member?
I do have discussion.
Yes. Mr. Wood?
Yeah, so, I'm moving this to second reading because I think we need to keep moving forward with it, but I'm concerned with some of the content. We'll be proposing some, some changes that I'll send out prior to the second meeting.
Okay.
In particular, there's a $300 book that we would purchase for every school board member. There's a whole bunch of printing and publication of things that are available readily online, and I'd just like to see us change it so that those things are only printed and provided if the new member wishes them to be printed. Some people would much rather have them electronically. So, I, in the essence of, you know, efficiency financially, I think it's important for us to keep that sustainable nature and not print stuff unnecessarily.
So, we actually discussed this at length at the meeting of the policy committee, and it was agreed that the option should exist for both, but what $300 book are your it was agreed that the option should exist for both. But what $300 book are you referring to, Mr. Wood?
Becoming a Better Board Member is $296 on Amazon.
There's also, we have also workshops that the state school board puts on.
Right. And I believe that they, yeah, I believe that they, do they not subsidize that for us?
It's free.
Yeah. So we don't pay $300 for it.
That, that book is a $300...
Through Amazon, yes.
And everything else here that needs to be printed according to this list, it will be between $50 and $100 total. I, I had submitted a copy of this and proposed that we make list, the list of the web links available to prevent that, and...
Yeah, we did discuss that at the policy meeting. We did discuss that at the policy meeting. And part of the problem is we felt that it was really important that everyone have a physical book of the school board policy manual. And then we did agree to put links in, but it was something that the entire committee did discuss. I'll have to go back and pull up my notes, but I'd be happy to send that information to you. And I would just request that in the future, if you want to make suggestions, if you could get them to the full policy board before we actually meet and spend our time working on it, it would just be helpful.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With all due respect, I did submit this particular policy with the format that I had, that I am suggesting. So it did go to the Policy Committee.
Well, in that case, then, we decided to stick with this.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, on board.
Jessica, yeah.
Mr. Wood?
Can I finish speaking, please?
Yes.
At this point, you know, I'd just like to move the policy forward. We can, you know, debate it further, but at this point, it doesn't need to keep moving.
Sure.
Again, just for clarification, there are three people here at this table that were at that meeting, and we did look at your suggestions, and we ultimately pushed this forward. So I'm not sure what the point of pushing it forward is if we're not pushing it to a second reading.
We are pushing it to a second meeting.
Excellent.
I think that was his intention, in that if there was a proposed amendment, which, you know, he's, he's free to, to propose and make that motion at the next meeting.
Can I just ask for clarification? At what point do we, when we've already looked at it and decided not to utilize it, and the Policy Committee voted to keep it as is, at what point, is there a point in the process where we don't keep pushing it forward?
The board is free to make any changes as, as a board beyond the Policy Committee. Ultimately, it's the board's decision to, to make, and the language that they put in is, is, you know, what the board approves. So if somebody does want to propose an amendment to something, they can do that. And it could be now, it could be at the next meeting, but ultimately, the board has to vote favorably to, you know, to move the whole thing forward. Anyway, further discussion? So we have a motion to move this to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes four to zero. Policy 2137 is on a Standing Facilities Subcommittee. It's also a new, new policy here for the first reading. Dr. Heisinger highlighted some of the issues we're having with our facilities and that, you know, in my opinion, this is something that's long overdue, to have a committee to look at, at the facilities and try and place some sort of a progressive replacement maintenance program that we can sort of level out over years, and we don't end up with, you know, huge, huge hits, you know, every, every so often. So it would certainly help to do that, but also just to get a handle on some of the, some of the issues that we have on our, in our facilities. So any other board member discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to move to second reading.
Any motion by Mr. Wood? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hanon. Any further discussion? All in favor of moving 2137 to a second reading, say aye.
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 That's four ayes, so the motion passes four to zero. Policy 2401, non-discrimination.
Motion to move to second reading.
Motion by Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hanon. Discussion, I would just say, this is a revision to an existing policy that, again, went through the Policy Committee. Just catching up here. Any further discussion? All in favor of moving this to the second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's four ayes. The motion passes four to zero. All right, Policy 2402, Staff Conduct and Ethics. Also a revision from the last time we, this one was discussed at length. I don't, it might have been the last meeting, in fact. It did go back through to the, the Policy Committee who made some revisions. Any discussion or a motion?
Motion to move to second reading.
I'll take that from Ms. Talapa. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. I heard him first. Further discussion? All in favor of moving 2402 onto the second reading, say aye.
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 That's four ayes. The motion passes four to zero. And that's it. Old business. We have none. We have some housekeeping items. The approval of the minutes for the October 21st, 2019, Board Meeting Minutes. There is a, an amendment that I wanted to point out. It's actually on line 23. The RSA is, is misnumbered in this case. What it should say is RSA 91-a colon 2-point, roman numeral 3-point-a in parentheses, and then go on to say, for a reason, that as he was out of state on business. It's relative to Mr. Wood participating by telephone at the last meeting. So this will be, this will appear on, on the next set of minutes as well. So I will move that the, the minutes of the October 21st School Board Meeting, as amended, be approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Drew and Hanon, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
That was four ayes. Motion passes four to zero. Approval of the non-public minutes of October 17th, October 21st, and October 29th.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Mr. Wood for those three sets of minutes. Is there a second? I will second it.
That was at the 17th meeting.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in...
Chair?
Yes.
You may need to break those out because I was not present for the October 21st.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure I can make a motion.
Yeah, you're correct.
That was at the 17th.
Okay. Yeah, let's, I'm sorry, let me withdraw that motion. So a motion to approve the non-public minutes of October 17th. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve from Mr. Wood. I will second it. I was there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero with Mr. Hanon abstaining. All right, for the non-public minutes of October 21st, 2019, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Hanon. Seconded by Ms. Talapa. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
There were three ayes. Motion passes three to zero with Mr. Wood abstaining. All right, approval of the non-public minutes for October 29th, 2019.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Talapa. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's four to zero. Passes. All right, the treasures, I will group these. We have three treasures reports, one for August 2019, one for September 2019, one for October 2019. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Motion?
Motion to approve by Mr. Hanon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Talapa. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's four ayes. The motion passes four to zero. All right, who is on the Finance Committee now? Is, are you on the...
Yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Hanon moves, Mr. Drew seconds, the approval of the manifests listed in the, I'm not going to name all these, but the manifest listed in the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That was four ayes. Motion passes four to zero. We have no need for non-public tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Ms. Talapa, second. I'll second.
Why not?
Why not? All, no, seeing no, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That motion passes four to zero, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight.